We do have a couple items for you this evening, one of new business and two of old business, the two old businesses we've tied together. But in new business, we do have an application for a CUP, the applicant's BW Solar, Dustin and Megan Madison, the owners, and it's conditional permit request, conditional use permit request. And in this case, we recommended that we have an opportunity for you all to ask questions before the public hearing that you might be asking in and after the public hearing that are informational in nature. This is not an opportunity for any kind of presentations from anyone other than staff to basically give you a little bit of the information on the where and the what about the project. And again, ask those questions so you'd be better prepared for the main meeting. Tom is the case manager on this project, so Mr. Eglin can come and kind of walk you through that. Are we having a tech issue?
Okay.
So I can get us started if you would like.
The greatest tips until he comes out?
Absolutely.
Very good.
Of course, he practices everything, and I haven't practiced his information, but I'll do my best. Get that. I got you to where you need to be. There you go.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Tom Eglin. I'm the senior planner for Louisa County. For your work session this evening, obviously later this evening at seven, the Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on BW Solar Holding with the applicant and the owners Dustin Madison and Megan Madison for a conditional use permit. 2023-07 to approve a 60-acre portion of parcel 14-71 for a utility-scale solar generating facility producing up to five megawatts of alternating current. Energy produced from the proposed Green Boot Solar project. Thank you. Appreciate it. Energy produced from the project will connect the Rappahannock Electric Cooperative Distribution Line off Gold Mine Road. Parcel 17-71 is in total 132.277 acres and is located between Gold Mine Road Route 613 and Peach Grove Road Route 621 in the mineral election district. The project is subject to Louisa County Solar Ordinance and the 31 conditions drafted for this case. Staff is here to answer any questions you have during the work session about the solar ordinance or the conditions that are within the case that are used normally over the years. Here to answer any questions you have. That's a very brief introduction of what we're going to hear later tonight.
Does anyone have any questions besides me? Very well, let me ask you a question too, Mr. Eglin. Do you believe you have a current or currently have a complete presentation or, I'm sorry, a complete application?
One moment, I'm gonna grab. Chairman, to answer your question, if you take a look at staff packet page nine, well, actually, page 39 and page 40 is the numbering on it. Staff has provided an analysis of the sixth application of this project. There are a few items that staff would like to see corrected and revised prior to going to the Board of Supervisors in order to make it truly a complete application. And those items are bullet pointed under staff analysis between page 39 and page 40 of your staff packet.
So, Mr. Eglin, we have, well, let me ask you this. Is this, I mean, six submittals, is this information been asked for or is this before and not provided? Or is this new findings in the six submittal that are still missing? Or, I mean, why are we at six revisions on this and still have nine questions outstanding?
It's a mixed bag, so I'll start with the first item, the location of existing culvert and the drainage pattern. That has been asked in previous conversations on previous applications. At one point in time, it was shown on the plan, and I think it just didn't make the most recent version of the plan. Please clarify PDF page 73 for Stormwater Management. So this applicant has reached out to ERM, an engineering firm, to ask about putting in some preliminary stormwater engineering. This is the first time we've seen this part of the document, so we are asking for some clarification on that item, so we've not seen that before. Page 62, sheet X112 for Temporary Parking Plan. We have seen temporary parking areas in past submissions, however, the most current submission did not end up, the parking area did not end up on the parking plan. It could have been just an oversight on the applicant's part. The next bullet point, PDF page 285, X108, Green Boot Pollinator Plan is still missing Western labels, and the old road network is shown. There's a lot of plans within this application, so I believe this was just a plan that was missed by the engineering group. It was not updated with most recent comments from the fifth version. The wetland crossing is something new based off how they're going to access a further portion of the property, so that is something we've not asked before. Please confirm if construction trash and debris were disposed outside of the county. That's more of a clarification question because the public facilities plan was passed recently, and they were asked to answer how it would impact general services, so I would say that's also a new item. And then lastly, what protections above the requirements from the Virginia Department of Environment Equality will be implemented to protect Lake Anna? That question has been asked by citizens and staff throughout the process. As the application has been refined, there's been additional information provided, but staff still believes we would like to have a more detailed answer on what will be done above and beyond the minimum requirements of both locality and the state to protect Lake Anna. And I think I skipped one bullet at the very top of packet page 40 here. The applicant should provide additional information on the dimensions of the power line. So that's something we have spoken to the applicant beforehand when sorting out the actual acreage of the project. Now that we have a full understanding of the line and its location, it's more of a detail, fine detail question of what will be surrounding that distribution line, how will it impact the house owned next door on the property, I believe owned by the sister of the owner or a family member of the owner, I'm not entirely clear. So, like I said, a mixed bag earlier. Some things are a result of things that have recently occurred or the most recent version, and other things we have hinted on in the past or asked or have been left out perhaps accidentally in this version.
So this is a 60-acre site. We have reviewed solar fields in the county, 1,200 acres or more. Is this inconsistent to go through six submittals? Because I believe we have, I believe we have a very clearly defined set of requirements for solar now. In fact, we seem to be going around the Commonwealth, training other localities in how solar should be done. Thanks to your effort, we appreciate that.
Thank you, Chairman.
It seems to me like, I'm just trying to find out, is six submittals on this, does that seem excessive, or is that about the way we usually go through this sort of thing? Or what's been your experience?
The experience has been, and I don't have my computer to double check my numbers, obviously, in front of me, but I believe Clonera, which is the most recent project that you all have seen, go through the Planning Commission, went through at least two reviews, and Oaks, I believe, went through three, which was a smaller project. So on average, I don't believe we've seen six submissions. We definitely didn't see them prior to the passing of the ordinance because we didn't have a list of requirements. So of the projects that we've seen come through with the ordinance, on average, I would say two to three submissions would be normal to see.
It disturbs me some that we have six submissions and we still have questions. And, you know, granted, there's the occasional typographical error and that sort of thing, but it seems some of this information should have been provided earlier or should have been provided with greater detail earlier. So I'm a little bit disturbed that we've gotten to six submissions, recognizing how much time that uses, staff time for reviews for such a project. Is there, it appears to me, I would say that there's nothing that prevents this project from coming to us tonight in the items left to address. Would you say that's a fair statement?
I believe the items left to address are items that can be easily sorted out. I wouldn't call them so far as minor, depending on what they are, but I believe it's something that could be easily resolved between now and the Board of Supervisors.
All right. And I guess one thing that does disturb me a little bit, just in getting this site plan resolved, is the questions in bullet item two having to do with the setbacks around the power line. Because the power line runs down from the project down to Gold Mine Road on the western side of the property there and runs right next to the property line down at Gold Mine Road for an adjacent piece of property. So we have, and it's a power line, I understand, but, you know, just trying to clarify the rules on the site plan and how much setback for the site plan is required, because I don't think we have, but I don't think we have 300-foot available on either side of the power line. So, and again, I recognize it's a power line, but just trying to work through that with the whole idea of the site plan requirements. Do you all, what are your thoughts on that?
I believe it warrants a discussion this evening with the applicant during the public hearing process to determine whether they plan on voluntarily conditioning a certain distance on either side of that distribution line, a buffer perhaps telling us, is it going to be used for cattle, sheep? What is the intent of the space on either side of that line to be used so that perhaps if property nearby is developed, that there is an expectation of what the buffer is going to be of the visual impact of that line?
All right, that's in line with what I was thinking as well. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Goodwin.
Earlier version of this, and I'm trying to go off of memory now, how many tests for wetlands? Was it 10 or 20?
I believe, I don't have it off the top of my head, but going through memory of the almost 600 pages, I think there's 21 streams that are, there's multiple types of streams, though.
I think there were 20.
But there, I don't believe there are that many wetlands. I think they actually have the engineer here tonight could answer that, but if I grab my computer, if you give me about 45 seconds, I can get you that answer.
My recollection is that there were about 20. Only three in the project area. The rest were outside the project area, and all three in the project area came up as wetlands?
So as you, on the screen, you can see currently right now, the two red areas with the blue plantings on them, those are the delineated wetlands as of now. So we can see at least two wetland areas. Again, I'd have to pull the report if, and I can give you exactly what the engineer stated was in it. And then, yes, Gold Mine Creek would have a wetland. On the other side there, sorry, the 300-foot buffer is blocking. Thank you.
I guess my concern is why so few done in the project area as opposed to the surrounding areas? And if all three of those came up wetlands, or three of them came up wetlands in there, why that wouldn't have suggested that we need to do more testing within the project area as opposed to outside the project area?
So I believe we should ask the engineer for the applicant here this evening whether they've done a full wetland delineation, whether they've done a desktop wetland delineation. Did they actually go on adjacent properties when they did one of the, obviously, the desktop, to just see what's there, but I don't know what level of engineering they've endeavored upon at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And let me, Mr. Gillespie, I know we have the applicant and the representatives here, but I would prefer, I would think, before we get into a lot of discussion, that with the applicant and their representatives, that maybe that would be better served during the public hearing, so the public can hear the entire part of this. It was a matter, this time was a matter of getting questions out between us and the staff. It seemed like a better use just to understand. Before we go down the path of...
It is, Mr. Chairman. Your meeting, but I concur with you 100%. I would say if there is something that is factual on a number, or, you know, whether it was a desktop delineation or desktop study, or a physical delineation, staff can certainly ask that question of the applicant and repeat it back to you if that's good factual information to have, or kind of, and it's an opportunity for them to be prepared for that question in the regular session.
Yeah, yeah. So I didn't want to, I know you all are here. I didn't want to say, well, we're going to ignore you for now. That's not the point. We, I think it's important for the public to hear the whole discussion.
Yep.
Otherwise, sometimes the public thinks, well, these deals are made before they walk in the door, and we don't want that to happen.
Absolutely.
So we like to have all of this out in the public.
Yeah, and again, as to the tone, I agree with that. I reinforce that. And I would say if there is anything that you really do feel factually that you want to get, you know, established for fact, we can go ahead and do that here, take a pause, and then repeat it back to you.
So are there any other questions for the staff?
I've got some comments, but I don't know where to go, really. You know, this is kind of rushed on, I think. I don't know, maybe I'm all in left field somewhere, but to get this thing two days before you have the work session and the public hearing, that's awful quick for the amount of stuff that's in this handout. I don't have any worry expecting anybody to go through all of this. Now, I enjoyed the history lesson. I really did. I enjoyed the history lesson of the county, the things that took place in the 1700s and all that good stuff. But it just, it's so much in here that it's mind-boggling for 60-acre project. That's just, I might be in left field.
No, but, Mr. Weaver, you do raise a good question. Since we are in the work session, would the staff just kind of give us a heads up on what kind of was the reason why things were slow to get out this time around? May have nothing to do with this at all, but...
No, it does not have to do with this case, and I, we apologize. Normally, we try to have your packets out on Friday before your Thursday meeting. Unfortunately, we had some late changes on Friday on another case before you this evening, and that delayed delivery of this packet, so we finished up the packet on Monday.
Well, just to deviate from what we're talking about right now a little bit further, Mr. Weaver does bring up a good point that Mr. Goodwin has brought up before. If we are going to be the deliberative body that's supposed to do the deep dive into all of these things, to hammer out all of the questions and concerns and get this right so that the board then gets a product that's in good shape for their review, we probably need to be the ones to have two weeks to a month to review it, package in hand, and the board then would not need as long. So the idea that we get these things at best six days before the meeting probably is not the way to do business to accommodate that. So I think maybe what we need to do is start looking at maybe changing the schedule in the future
Sure.
so that we wind up with a package two, three, four weeks ahead of the meeting to have time to do the review properly.
We can certainly do that. I will say there's a, there's an issue in Virginia about the public notice requirements. It's now very tight, and so we would be giving you materials for a meeting before we had advertised for the meeting, under a four-week-out time period. We cannot advertise more than three weeks out, and it has to be essentially within one week. So, or actually, it's one week to two weeks, one day to 14 days. So we cannot literally conclude the agenda and advertise for it up to 14 days out.
I understand.
And again, it's overcomeable, but that is a consideration that we're in. And there were some, there were some things that the board undertook at their last meeting related to the changes to the comprehensive plan that you all had recommended to them for public facilities that we asked be included in these cases coming before you this evening. So this is the first time these applicants have done that review. Again, for a solar energy generation facility, it's very different from an apartment complex or a mixed-use project or a shopping center or any other type of land use that would have other components to it. So they have done the analysis that also put a little tight on their time to get a turnaround back to us.
Certainly. I understand that. I just, you know, maybe not three weeks or four weeks, but six days seems a little short.
I understand.
So maybe we need to look at revising the timetable on that.
We sure will.
Sure, okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Goodwin.
Fill up on that.
Yes.
I did have lunch with Chairman and Board the week before last, and we talked about that. He used the term "deep dive." And I said, well, if you look at the process, it's almost backwards. We get six days to do a deep dive. You all get three to four weeks to make the decision. And he agreed with that. And so I think that's genesis of a lot of this.
Absolutely.
And then, of course, when it comes out, three days, then that's really, that's really tightening us down.
Yeah, it is. We try to have a procedure that frontloads pre-application meetings, neighborhood meetings, repeated neighborhood meetings, which this case went through, to be able to get the facts and the lay of the land out there so people are more familiar. If they do want to take a deep dive into the wetlands analysis or cultural resources, then that's a piece. You know, you might have 66% knowledge already about the, you know, the where it is and the what it is, and then you're getting a little deeper into it. But I understand, I mean, no one can consume from zero the content in this material in a week, frankly. I mean, it would be, unless you have nothing else to do. So, I mean, Tom over here will do it in a week, but not on, but not on round one. And so again, remember that also the citizens who have seen this have had opportunity to get a lot of the facts out there through the neighborhood meetings, so they have that information. But that was also why, and that was also why we felt it was important to have this opportunity this evening for any of the questions that were detailed about those items I mentioned or others. We may not be able to answer the question in your work session. We know that sort of fact you want to get to, and if so, then it might be a question either A, staff delivers, and Tom's found the, an answer for the wetlands question in the packet, but also it's a question that staff may not be best prepared or the best person or the best individual to speak to that answer, and the applicant can address it in the regular session. But we, I hear you loud and clear. We will, we will look at our schedule.
Okay.
Your schedule.
I do have one other question regarding the third bullet item on the items to clarify. This is PDF page 73, post-construction stormwater management sentence. This is something that I've struggled with some because it seems to lead me down the wrong path. "In this scenario, upgradient diversions of berms could be used to redirect upstream off-site flow to bypass the site and convey on-site flow towards the pond." Now, what I'm trying to get through in all of this is, and this is just something to consider for the question that'll come out in the public hearing, I'm trying to understand, are we intending, as we put this project in and change the normal flow, to divert flow that would go through the project to off-site in an uncontrolled fashion? Upstream off-site flow diverted off-site in an uncontrolled fashion and only allow flow that is in the project itself to flow towards the pond, which seems to me like it might create unintended consequences that we're not dealing with right now with the natural flow that passes through the site. So it's a clarification. What does that mean and what potential problems could that cause? So that's a, that's a one that I had scratched my head on as well. So, yeah.
Staff believes that that question should be asked, answered by the applicant's engineer this evening.
I understand, yeah. So that's why I said this is just a heads up for what's coming at the public hearing. But thank you, Tom. I appreciate your willingness to step in the breach whenever.
As always.
Where did that come from, that question?
That's, it is in, it says PDF page 73, post-construction stormwater management. So if you look at...
It's probably the applicant's page 73 in their application?
That's what I'm thinking, and that's a little hard to get to right offhand the way that...
Yeah, where is that in our packet?
Yeah, it's, gosh, hang on.
39.
I was seeing that, but that was two days ago.
It is going to be...
39, isn't it?
Trying to get there with the page numbers on mine.
You said it's one of the bullet points, Joe.
Yeah, it's the, it's on page 40. Yeah, it's bullet point, the second bullet point from the top on page 40, but I was trying to get to the PDF page for the post-stormwater construction management.
Almost got it. Almost got it.
John, we found it, and we'll have an answer for you later.
Very good. Thank you.
Chairman, if you would like an answer to the wetland question, I can provide that.
The same question we're talking about?
Different question.
Different question. Very well.
The wetlands were field delineated.
That's for Mr. Goodwin, who asked that question.
Yes, sorry. Mr. Goodwin, the wetlands were field delineated. And of the wetlands found, six were forested, two were scrub, and two were emergent. And you are correct, there were 21 streams that were comprised of different types of streams.
Very well. Any other questions?
These wetlands y'all speaking of, are they being impacted?
The applicant's provided a preliminary stormwater design. I believe we should ask the engineer if they feel as if, if this project is approved and goes through site plan review process, whether they believe that they'll have to impact wetlands and purchase nutrient credits or go through additional permitting through the Army Corps of Engineers and the Department of Environment and Quality. There should be an impact to the wetlands because in order to get to the southwestern small array down at the bottom here, there's a little green patch to the bottom left, they're going to have to put in a crossing to get to that southern portion if they develop that part of the property.
And that, is that so they can access from Gold Mine Road?
If you don't mind holding down the fort, Ellis Quarles has gone into screensaver mode, so I'm going to go in there and unlock him.
Sure.
While he's doing that. We don't, we don't have a pointer on here, so I'll just say, as you look at the screen, I'm going to walk over to it so everybody can see it.
The site development occurs in this area here. This is a wetland associated with the stream, and there's a site project area here, and this would be crossed to get to that portion of the project area. So that would be a wetland crossing, stream crossing.
Another question, Mr. Chairman. I just, to follow up on that. In some of this reading I saw, y'all were requesting access from Gold Mine Road. Is that, or did I not see that?
That is a staff recommendation, yes.
And would, would see, where does that stand?
I mean, it has been discussed with the applicant from, after the first neighborhood meeting on. So it was minimally discussed in the pre-application period, and it was something that was discussed after application was made, but it's been discussed for quite a while.
Because that would have to come across the creek.
Correct. That would, well, that would cross Gold Mine Creek.
Be another impact. Okay.
Is he good? He's working on it? Okay. Mr. Quarles, as you know, is joining virtually, and he's, he has a little issue with his teams.
Any other questions?
That's all I got right now.
I'll have one when he gets back.
Oh, all right. Well, we'll just, we'll hold for a moment. You're not, you're not interested in asking the B team?
No.
No?
I want Dr. Sol.
The guy himself. Talk to the man.
I'm just thinking about utility players and short stops and, you know, whether you want to be that person or not. So we have one in Tom. He's Swiss Army knife over there. That was either in or out.
No comment, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brooks, while we're waiting.
With additional time y'all had to spend on the public facility review. Kind of nice having that in the packet. It was a nice feature.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll respond to this. Tom and I worked on that together in terms of format and content. If there is any, thank you for making that statement. We didn't have a lot of time to talk to people about exactly what it would look like, including, you know, even some of the people in the organization and staff that we might say, "Does this make sense to you?" But if there are things you want to see added to that, simplified, changed, rearranged or whatever, please let us know. I think we, I think we did a pretty good job just keeping it short and sweet, so.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Ellis is back, I believe. Sorry about that. The computer decided it wanted to do an update.
Welcome back, Ellis. Yeah, Mr. Dickerson.
Mr. England, in the application we're reviewing tonight, do the buffers meet or exceed the buffer requirements in Louisa County's solar ordinance?
The buffers meet the requirements of the ordinance, and I'll walk you through that. So the northern and southern portions are going to be comprised of 300 feet of existing vegetation. As you can see on the, to the left of your screen here, and the right, the applicant has provided supplemental planting vegetation schedule. So the green dots you're seeing are forested aggrad rows, which is their current requirement. It was three, and then it was increased to four in August of 2021. The reason why they're showing you a supplemental planting schedule is because those are the areas that they believe do not have an existing mature vegetative buffer and that will need help to get there. And the minimum requirement in the ordinance is forested aggrad rows for areas that need supplemental vegetation or don't have any. Of course, you could always cut down all the trees and put in forested aggrad rows, but that's, that's not something we normally recommend or has been particularly looked kindly upon. So what you're seeing is on the eastern portion of the property, a pretty good healthy stand of existing trees they're going to keep, and you can see that in the bright green on either side of the property. Obviously, the western portion will be supplemented, and the eastern portion will probably be existing. And then you have the yellow, which is the 10% pollinator requirement. Now, I think they might be going a little bit above 10% in pollinators, and so, they're, okay. So they could increase the trees possibly on one side or the other if they wanted to get it down to 10%. That is a question that could be asked of them tonight of, can we get a few more trees? Can we still keep the 10% pollinator requirement? So that's me walking through. What you're seeing here on the screen is that it, it does meet the intent of the 300-foot buffer. It is not a full 300-foot existing vegetative buffer. We don't have really very many of those projects, so. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Oh.
Mr. Brooks.
Well, it's, it's, can you dial up the, I don't know if they call it a view sheet or... They had three sites on, three on the northern side and one on the southern side. I want to see the one, the view from... Gold Mine Road. And I...
Yes, yes, I can dial that up for us.
Visual buffer, I think, I refer to as page 336 in the packet.
Yeah.
Later on. On that page 336, I found it in the packet that was here too. Is that fairly representative of the view from all of Gold Mine Road? It, it's showing like, what I'm trying to get at, is there any visual of the solar field in Gold Mine Creek Road? In this picture here, it seems to be a rise with the house sitting on a hill. No view. Is that the case all the way through?
Yeah, I'll go back there.
Look like the topo map shows a little knot right there where the house is sitting. I can't tell. I believe it's a little saddle down in there. I don't know if there's any.
So Gold Mine Road down here, along the side?
Yes.
Staff's actually driven out here. You can look at the contour map. There's, there's a bit of a crest in here, and there's, there's a house right here.
I don't know, yeah.
And I think there actually is a photo as you're referring to in the, right here.
Yep.
I, I would say that that's fairly representative of what you see when you drive on that road. We were obviously in the small county sedan, so I don't know if it'd be a little bit different from an F-150, but there is a bit of a berm or hill up in that area.
Fair representation all the way through, then.
Mr. Gillespie's in the car with that small sedan with me, so he's a bit taller than me. He might have a different perspective.
Sure. Well, I mean, I, you know, anyone who's been out to the site and can read this open map can see that the relief does change over the property. But generally, the rise from Gold Mine is, is to that elevated point, and then there's a decline to Gold Mine Creek. It's a little different on the Gold Mine, excuse me, on the Peach Grove side, which is, starts generally higher. There is at one point an area of a roadside, not really a berm, but kind of a, kind of a bluff almost, kind of a high, high ditch line, and then it falls away. So generally, high elevation further to the north, lowest elevation, obviously, at Gold Mine Creek in between the two portions of the property. As you can see here, there are a couple rises or knolls and kind of knots or knobs from Gold Mine Creek that obscure some of the view there. We can also scroll this one up, I think, or down and get to the aerial imagery. And again, this is something we can certainly do in the meeting. I'm not sure if the applicant has that in their presentation, but this puts a little bit of the, the context of the tree line. So the other thing that's intercepting that line of view is a tree line that runs across the property, and I'll kind of point out where that is.
The high points here and here, the mission line part of the project is going to be coming through this area here, which is where they take, where they took the viewpoint from. Can everybody see that?
Yeah.
So that's where that viewpoint is taken from. We have a picture in the packet. As you can see, it is below this higher point here. Starts below the higher point. Same thing over here. This is where the house on Knoll is. As this goes down here, as it declines, both in this area and North Creek, there's also a diagonal tree line that's pretty significant that runs across the property.
Where are the panels going to be located on that?
Sure. So, Mr. Weaver, it's a little hard to see in this view because they're black on top of a dark green background, but the panels are all located on the north side of Gold Mine Creek, and they are, again, a little hard to see on this one, but more visible on the black line. They're on the north side of the tree.
Sure. Do you happen to have either of those in our presentation?
I do not.
Okay. Do you all happen to have either of those in your presentation? Either this view or the other view? You do? No, that's okay. So thank you. So we can answer questions from staff, you know, just in terms of the facts of what's in the packet and what's, what's in the application. It sounds like they have a graphic that they intend to put up on the screen, which you can speak from. We would clean up this view a little bit because this is your online packet, and it has a little bit of extra stuff on the left side of the screen. So we can make this a little bit easier PDF to zoom in and out on if you want to do that during the regular session.
I was just trying to get a feel for myself and anybody else looking at it is...
It rises up, and then it falls down. It's a little different on the left side of the property to the west than it is in the bulk of the property, the main two-thirds of it.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. England, just a question for you. Did, I know there was a question trying to resolve acreage in the project with generation capacity. Do we ever get that resolved suitably? Do we know what the, that the acreage is reasonable for the generation that's proposed?
Chairman, yes. Staff believes that that has been reasonably resolved. If you look at packet page 103 out of 572, it's Green Boot Solar PV Plant Electrical Layout, sheet X105. So again, that's sheet, packet page 103. You'll see at the bottom right, a project area breakdown of the acreage within the 60 acres. And so that does break down to the acre what each segment is being used for. And according to the applicant, the interconnection easement is 1.2 acres. The buildable project area is 15.7 acres, and the rest of it's kind of a combination of buffer, vegetative buffer, pollinator area, and undisturbed area, which could possibly also be vegetative buffer. Or if we'd like to dive into that, we can ask the applicant what their definition of undisturbed area would be, other than what we think it is.
Right. Well, now, that's, that's, yeah. All right. Thank you. There was one other thing that I was looking for, and I haven't been able to find it. I'm checking this paper copy. I had the electronic copy. I don't do quite as well with electronic copies, but I'm going back through the paper copy to see if... I missed it somehow, but we used to have a statement in the proposed conditions that said that the applicant was allowed to cut trees if they caused a problem for generation when they become mature. Is that still in the conditions, or did we remove that from the conditions?
If, you may or may not remember, back in October or November, I believe, you and I had a discussion about that and what, where it came from, which is an older project, probably back around 2020. And then, you know, with internal discussion, it was believed it was best to remove it to allow the zoning administrator to truly understand a request for removing a vegetation, that it wasn't just for additional PV area due to the fact that the tree had grown too high, but truly a safety issue that something should be removed. Because obviously, you do not want a dead or diseased oak falling into a panel array.
Absolutely.
But if the applicant's requesting a large oak to be removed because it's decreasing solar by 1%, then that, that was a concern about keeping that language, and that was why it was removed.
Okay. So I, I see the other language in 10. I was just looking for the condition 10. I was looking for the, the item about threatening or reducing electrical generation. So I see we have removed that then. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the questions I had. Does anyone else have any further questions? Oh, well, there is one question of curiosity. We seem to have some pages redacted here somehow.
There's only one that I understood.
Not quite. Not quite sure exactly. Not quite sure exactly what the story was.
I figured that might come up. So the applicant provided us redacted pages, I believe, out of their lease agreement.
I see.
And I believe we should ask the applicant what might be in those. I'm assuming it's terms, conditions, and pricing, but we could always ask the applicant what exactly was redacted in those pages, which, if you're looking for their, yeah, they're around page 174 to...
Well, that's got 167 to...
There's some between, like, ah, are some other, there's a couple sections of redacted pages. It looks like in the lease agreement and also in the interconnection agreement with Rappahannock Electric.
I'm not sure why that's...
Pages are around page 150, 164, around there.
Well, yeah, there's a number of these in here.
And then 137 is the lease.
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't find anything in these pages that led to questions, but I, you know, aside from what's in these pages, but anyhow.
We, staff wanted to make sure the full packet was provided to everybody.
I think we've had a discussion about things we maybe can use in solar and things maybe we don't need to read, but those were quick reads, so I'm not complaining. Okay, so if there are no other questions then, I think it's been productive to get these things out and available for the applicants to consider so that when we have the public hearing, we're ready to ask and answer, and the public is a part of the process. So, anything else that staff would like to comment on before we move on to the next item?
Staff has no comment at this time.
Very good. Well, thank you, Mr. Eglin.
Thank you.
So we will move on to, to the next item, which I believe is gateways. Is it not?
Correct.
Yes. Yes. I didn't get one of those.
I didn't give it till today, so.
Oh, I got it, yeah. Okay, well, thank you. You're good to go. Carol.
So at least the vice chair can do.
Never let it be said, he didn't do the least he could do. Have a tough home.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. It all gets pumped here. All right.
Gateways and roadways.
All right, so thank you all. So we had briefed on this in the past, had been sidelined while we were working on other amendments to the comprehensive plan related to public facilities, public services, and what we were calling the focus areas. And the focus areas are a version of a small area plan in the designated growth areas. And so gateways were wrapped in that, but also set to the side. So we're ready to bring those back now. There was a memo that was in your packet, and I'm just going to put some materials on the screen, and then you have a handout from me that's just kind of a scratch pad if you want to use it for that, and we can, you know, bring this back into a more formal form in the future. So, just to kind of go through gateways from a planning context, both in state level and Louisa County Code. And this item will serve to address the focus areas too, which was the next item that was coming back to, we brought to you in December, and then we said we really wanted to talk to the members of each individual district about the focus areas or the growth areas within their districts. Thank you, Mr. Quarles. So, number one, gateways and gateway corridors are not defined by Virginia State Statute or Louisa County Code. It's a concept, but not given definition or a strict definition. The Comprehensive Plan, the 2040 Plan states a vision for gateways, and we'll kind of go through those. And then focus areas for detailed planning are intended to enhance those designated growth areas in the sections that are in the comprehensive plan. Just to remind you, statutory authority for planning in Virginia comes from state code 15.22200, and we've gone through this before, but we have some new members, so just to remind everybody, the chapter is intended to encourage localities to improve the public health, safety, convenience, and welfare. We often talk about health, safety, and welfare. Sometimes it's health, safety, morals, convenience, and welfare, so there are a few things that go in there. But health, safety, convenience, and welfare is what's in the code. And to plan for the future development of communities to the end, that transportation systems be carefully planned, community centers be developed with adequate highway utility, health, educational, and recreational recreational facilities, that the need for mineral resources, the needs of agriculture, industry, and business be recognized in future growth, military installations be recognized and taken into account when practical, and the residential areas be provided with healthy surroundings for family life, that agricultural and forestal land be preserved, and that the growth of the community be constant with the efficient and economical use of public funds. Well, that's what our comp plan does. That's great. So, you know, that is, that is our goal. Also, looking at the state statute, this pertains specifically to amendments to the map, of which a change of zoning district or rezoning is an amendment to the map, and a conditional use permit is an amendment to the map. So these are the considerations that the state says we should be looking at, existing use in character, the plan, the comprehensive plan for the county, the suitability of the property for various uses, the trends of growth or change, current and future requirements of the county. So now we get into our public facilities requirements as to land for various purposes as determined by the population, economic studies, and other studies, the transportation requirements of the community, multimodal, could be, you know, freight and transit, could be surface transportation, could be air transportation, the requirements for airports, housing, schools, parks, playgrounds, recreational areas, and other public, other public services, the conservation of natural resources, preservation of floodplain, protection of life and property from impounding structure failures, that's dam failures, the preservation of agricultural forestal land, and the conservation of properties and their values, and the encouragement of the most appropriate land throughout the locality. It's great. That's what we do, that's what you all do every month. However, you don't see gateways in there, roadways, corridors, focus areas, not part of the overall mandate from the state in the statutory framework. However, we adopted our own zoning ordinance in Louisa County, and these are the sections of the ordinance. It's just kind of a general overview of what it's for. And you'll see here in chapter 86, nine, we do have specifically called out relationship to the comprehensive plan, which is a state object, state objective to relate to the plan. And some of these are numbered a little differently than the way they show up in the state code, but they're, they follow. And then we also have number 10, lessen the number of accessways along roads. So that's a specific goal of the relationship of zoning to the comprehensive plan or the land development regulations to the comprehensive plan, improving the visual character of gateway corridors and roadways. So those are things specific in our code to be looking at for zoning and implementation of zoning and the consideration of map amendments. So what is gateway corridor? Again, as I said, it's not defined by state statute or in Louisa County Code. The comprehensive plan states a vision for gateways. That's our plan. This is the land use vision. Citizens of Louisa County will preserve, protect, and encourage the development and improvement of open spaces, agricultural forestal land for the production of food, and other agricultural forestal products. We will focus high-quality development into the desired established growth areas to efficiently deliver opportunities and services to citizens of Louisa County. And item number four, just to kind of skip over directing growth away from rural areas, encouraging compact cluster development, number four is improving the appearance of major gateways and roadways. And of course, that can mean different things in different contexts. Number five, reducing the frequency of access points on public roads. That's where that zoning objective and land use, land development regulation comes from. So this is one of the growth areas that was updated, brought to you as an update, as a focus area in December. With the changeover and your new members, we wanted to make sure that everybody had a chance in the Louisa District as well as Greensprings that had a few, two growth areas significant in there to look at these and do detailed planning. Some of this is specific to an area but not specific to parcels, and so it takes a close look at areas but not at the actual and projected land uses based on the parcelization of the, on the ground. So we want to talk about, we want to talk about priorities, and so just a reminder, these are the growth areas as they relate to each other and the surrounding counties. A little better version of that is in the handout, so on the, kind of the back page, the last page, that's our growth areas. And then you'll remember, we looked at one of the growth areas and a corridor within the growth area as an entrance into Louisa County from the Spotsylvania County side, across New Bridge and the lake to Wears Crossroads as both a gateway and a corridor. And so if we were looking for a definition of gateway corridor, this may be the model or be a model for Louisa County. So I'm going to start, and this slide starts with item three and what was handed out to you, because we've kind of gone over one and two. So the update after meeting with Commissioner Goodwin, after the comp plan amendments were brought forward for public facilities and working with Mr. Dickerson and the other, and the two members of the board, including Mr. Barlow and Mr. Williams, got into the focus areas. And so what we have, want to update you on today, and some food for thought, we'll get to items five and six at the end, but number one is strategies for implementing these things. Access management, basically controlling where driveways can be cut and which roads have significant driveways, either spacing or type, whether it's commercial, industrial, residential, minor, major, et cetera. Roadside standards for street trees, pedestrian ways are basically, you know, multi-use path or a sidewalk. Berms, which in Zion Crossroads, some places have berms and some do not. There are developments that are behind berms. They do a certain thing. Well, you know, describing all of that, we've talked a little bit this evening about what happens behind landmass for the conditional use case. Signs and signage, access points under a roadside standard, development setbacks for building or parking, and I'll just, you know, point out that we have some of these. There may be some cross purposes here, which is that in the development areas, the primary artery and secondary artery setbacks that are generally higher on Route 15 or 208 or 522 or 605 are decreased in the growth areas, because the expectation is that development in the growth areas will be clustered and more compact and more efficient. So there is a push-pull tension between having some additional setback in a, in an area of development to allow for roadside trees, roadside buffers, pedestrian ways and side paths, and what's been done in code, which is to decrease the setback in the growth areas. So we need to untangle that a little bit. And again, what may be appropriate for one growth area may not be appropriate in another. So we would, we would recommend to you that we get to priorities. On the signage standards, kind of two types of signage standards. One is for the welcome to wayfinding signs, welcome to Louisa, could say welcome to Greensprings, could say, could say something else, but that's generally a wayfinding sign or a kind of a community identities, identification sign. The other is signage for individual developments. And again, we can look at some of the growth areas that have been more active and more controlled through conditioned proffers on commercial development or planned unit development or resort development, master plan district. So at Zion Crossroads, for example, we do have signage standards which were developed case by case, project by project. They're not consistent throughout Zion Crossroads, but there is a fairly controlled signage in that area because of the zoning conditions that were established case by case. Architectural standards for buildings, we have most of these today for the growth areas that relate to the building materials. They're not highly detailed for, you know, door and window openings, roof pitches, all the things that begin to detail out of building, but they're, you know, they're basic standards. We do have an object in the comprehensive plan that says parcel interconnection shall be encouraged, and that's it. It's not codified, so again, may be appropriate in some districts, some of the focus areas and not in others. And then transportation enhancements, whether that be a, an additional type of facility, whether it be a walking area where a walking area doesn't exist, or that the additional lanes or signalization changes at an intersection. So again, a model for looking at corridors and alignments. One was suggested and has been discussed at some length with New Bridge as a road section. Access management is a model. Again, what if driveways were to be a certain distance apart from each other as a requirement above and beyond the VDOT standard? Again, where appropriate, which is why we need to talk to you about each one of the areas, which brings us to priorities and our projected completion for this kind of work. So we would look to add this to the 2045 comprehensive plan and, oops, and in terms of, you know, the extent, this is the county of Abilmarl, which we've seen before for entrance corridors, they're extensive. Commissioner Goodwin and I have talked about how to implement this, if this was even desirable, but, but how this is implemented in a neighboring county. There are other models. But what we really want to get is a list of three workable focus areas to sit down and talk with individual commission members about Gum Spring, Shannon Hill, Fern Cliff, Zion Crossroad, Gordonsville, Louisa, Mineral, and Lake Anna. We can't do all of the, we have a very limited staff for long-range planning efforts for detailed studies, and so we can't run six or seven at a time. We can run two or three at a time. So what I'd like out of the group today is some, some thought for a future meeting to talk about priorities or talk about some today and any thoughts from the update after Mr. Goodwin and I worked on this.
It seems to me like two priorities that would naturally jump to mind would be Wears Crossroads, the 208 entrance and Zion Crossroads.
Yep.
Those two. Now, whether another one of those, if you want to work on three, would be in town Mineral or Louisa. You know, there's, right now, there's not a lot other than an industrial park being built at Shannon Hill, and there's not a lot at all going on at Gum Spring, so I don't know if they would be our top priority in that list. It just seems to me like the ones that particularly Wears Crossroads with that one almost too far developed, but to get whatever things we can get lined up for that before it gets completely gone. So, Zion Crossroad may be the same.
Yeah. So thank you.
But I don't, that's just my opinion. I don't know if anyone else has another opinion or not.
I see.
Let me just add to that.
Please, Mr. Brooks.
I just noticed here recently with what's potentially going on in Gum Spring, that we may need to give some attention to the focus map we're looking at down there. Some things have jumped over at me that may want the commission and staff to, I'd like to sit down with staff and we spoke about it a little bit, if they'd be in particular with any of it. But certainly, that's behind the first two you mentioned, but it's, it's not, nothing real major, but it is a few items I would like to address.
I think those would be three good ones to start with, if you're looking for three. So we had also identified in the memo that was sent out in the packet Fern Cliff as an area of some attention, and, you know, all, again, there's a, you know, this is the whole county, we're talking about our major growth areas, and there are a lot of details in all these. I will just say, the Fern Cliff area has, I'm not making a pitch for it, I'm just going to say it, it does have an established lot pattern and commercial and industrial zoning pattern as, as well as really convenient interstate access that puts it on the crosshairs for a lot of people from outside the community as a place of interest. And that's above and beyond what happens, including Gum Spring has some similar, you know, characteristics for that reason, but that's over and above what may be happening around the intersection at Wears Crossroads. So we, we can certainly take on three at a time. I think that's a fair workload for us to take on, and we can see if some of these are a little more complex than others. Some of the smaller issues we can look at in Gum Spring and Gordonsville relate to some parcels that are zoned and developed as residential and planned for mixed use. And it's really, getting an echo there, it's really just doesn't... And it's really, getting an echo there, it's really just, does not make sense. And so we would like to, you know, be the plastic surgeon and kind of nip and tuck on those two areas. Again, that's kind of a housekeeping effort because we're, no one is coming in on those residential neighborhoods knocking for a zoning map amendment today. So the comp plan, I think, is a little, a little too gross in its approach to how those parcels are to be used over time, and we can clean it up, but no one's going to come and ask for a zoning change tomorrow. But I certainly would want, in the next 2045 comp plan, to have those, those areas that are not likely, or reasonable, or feasible to develop as something other than what they are, to be recognized for what their future land use would be. Those are pretty easy, and those are not high, other than Gum Spring that's at attention, and again, has a proximity to the interstate issue. So with those, we'd like to start working with each one of the commissioners, and I'll note Zion Crossroads, two districts. So we'll be working with two commissioners, Mr. Quarles on the phone and Mr. Dickerson. Lake Anna growth area, and I would suggest, even though Ware's Crossroads is in the Mineral portion of that, that we would also want to work with the Cuckoo District as well. So we would try to work with two. And then Gum Spring is really just mountain road. So we would, unless you want to bring a, you know, bring a friend, we would start with just the one commissioner.
I'll break Tommy.
Okay. So, and is there any feedback on what we handed out in terms of approaches? Again, signage, building standards, roadside buffers, interconnected parcels, all those things are tools that people can use, and they're specific to any particular scale of development or type of development and, you know, genus loci of where it is in the world. So, you know, we are not suggesting that any of that be codified today. That's a suggestion for an approach to look at for planning. So any feedback on that would be greatly appreciated now or after this meeting.
Yeah.
Mr. Weaver?
Thank you. When you're talking about improving the gateways coming into the county, who's responsible for most of the money that's going to take care of doing that?
Well, it depends on what it is, and so...
I mean, if you're going to improve your gateway, you've got to do a whole lot of work to dress it up. You just can't plant trees on the side of the road and say, we've done that.
Sure. So generally...
We continue, 208 is running from 64 to 95, basically, and we continue to let homes build closer and closer and closer to the roadway. How are you ever going to get a roadway like that enhanced to the point where it looks good?
Yeah, great question. So that's a...
It's a lot of money.
Yep. So roadways can be addressed for aesthetics, right? Setback in quality materials and placement of materials, orderly development, sometimes there's a little bit of, there's a little bit of beauty in variety, right? And there's a bit of ugliness and monotony, so you don't necessarily want it to look all alike from one end to the other. But on the other hand, free flow, more free-flowing cars and trucks going down a road is something that takes potentially alignments, potentially, you know, consolidated parcels for development that have shared driveways or roadways that are being built for more than two or three units, right? So we have a mixture of those things. I would say I would love to talk with you about some of the other roads that are in the Jackson District as well, because 33 has a similar kind of character of 208. And access management is probably the best way to start on some of those major corridors.
I have another comment on that, and I've wondered about this for years and years and years. Who was responsible for not developing the rest area in Louisa County over on 64? And if you're talking about improving the gateways, there are more and more people asking, why is there not a rest area over there on 64? It was built to be there. Did the county follow through?
No, the county's not responsible for that infrastructure. That's the Virginia Department of Transportation. And, you know, really, the, you know, the poll there is through your elected representatives to the House and Senate. So there's a legislative delegation that I think you'd want to address, and it could be a legislative priority for the county to get those abandoned or never developed, rest areas developed. I mean, it'd have to be a state, it'd have to be a state planning and budget priority is what it would have to be.
It would be a feather in the cap of the county to have that rest area over there.
It'd be a good place for a truck stop, wouldn't it?
What? Truck stop.
Right, not this month. I don't even go there, not this month.
We need a rest area between Ware's Richmond and Charlottesville, I guess.
But there's one. We've got one.
Yeah.
It's on both sides of the road, they just don't use it.
Tommy, you asking me?
Across the road to use it. It's kind of like a gate. Thank you.
Any, any other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Carson?
I would like to say I support the three that are on the table. I do have a question, though. What effort have the towns made? You talk about these gateways, what efforts have Louisa and Mineral made in this endeavor on their own?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the town of Mineral is undertaking the update, their plan right now, their town plan. I believe the Louisa town plan is about three or four years old, it's fairly recent, if I remember correctly. There are some components in those plan, in the Louisa plan for gateways, and as you know, some of the signage, welcome to the town of Louisa have been updated. Again, gateways can be a lot more than just welcome to a community identification sign. Much of what the town has tried to do over a fairly, the town of Louisa has tried to do over a fairly sustained period is build out the sidewalk infrastructure and make that town road system work as a town road system on the major roads, and I think done a pretty good job of it. Usually when they talk with VDOT, it usually begins with, you know, the sidewalks and the main roads in town of Louisa are pretty well established. But no, we, that's why Mr. Purcell is here, but not here this evening yet, but that's why the town members are on the county planning commission is to have that exchange of ideas back and forth. There have been some staff changes also in the towns and some new people who have come into those positions that, we're actually meeting with the town zoning administrator tomorrow morning for Mineral, and the town zoning administrator for Louisa has been on the job, I think, three weeks at this point. So we, there are some things that we'll be doing with the planning zoning folks that are new in those positions.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I would, you know, again, love to have you be a part of that for the towns of Louisa, and you're represented for Mineral. So, yeah. Well, thank you. And again, just because we can't work on multiple projects, and again, as a group, the focus area language was made consistent with the goals and the updates that were coming forward related to public facilities. So that was good work, it was fundamental work. But at a parcel level, at an individual property level, we recognize that additional work needs to be done, and we want to do that with the people who know those the best, at least starting with the planning commission members. So what I would say to you is, we would look for a monthly report, and we would say where we may be and what it looks like we would be bringing materials back to you from each one of those three initial planning areas, focus areas.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Goodwin?
This has morphed a little bit since Mr. Gillespie and I talked, because number four did not have an S on it. It was a model. And when we talked, we found some things unique to each focus area that would tend to lead you in different directions. Some of them were the residential, some were traffic counts, some were accident statistics. And when we left, we were going to take the New Bridge Road from the bridge to 522 as the model. So you knew what the outcome we were looking for, and what different factors impacted that outcome. My concern with doing three at once, with three different commissioners or sets of commissioners, is you're going to get pulled in a lot of different directions because we don't know where we're going. And if we, if we went back to the one model, finish that sooner than trying to take on three, get it back, explain it, let you all understand it, and then go through the prioritization, knowing what we found out when we went through the model. Now, if you think this is the better way, you head staff.
Yep.
But that was our thinking when we last talked.
It was. It was. It was. I'd say for road alignments and access management, Zion Crossroads and Lake Anna couldn't be further apart, right? One is fairly well, maturely planned and underway for commercial and non-residential and mixed use development, and one is still very much in the planning phases. So I don't think doing those at the same time are conflicting. It is more time-intensive, but I don't see those as being conflicting. Bringing in Gum Spring allows us to take a different, a different scale entirely because we have an interstate there that's essentially mostly undeveloped land with some large areas as opposed to Zion, which is, you know, partly developed also with some large areas. So I believe we can undertake three of these at the same time, and we're going to get some different lessons from each one. I agree on the road alignment. There's no question that the 208 section is a model that we wouldn't get in the other Gum Spring and Zion areas, because there are really no roads to realign there.
Okay.
Well, thank you for that. Appreciate it. Look forward to reporting back to you next month.
Very good. Thank you.
Josh?
Yes, sir.
Josh?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
During the, we were trying to get this audio straight, and I heard you mention Vice Chairman Dickinson and myself, and I didn't know exactly what you were alluding to. If you could repeat, go through that little portion again.
Yes, absolutely, Mr. Quarles. So in the Zion Crossroads growth area and focus area for study, there are two election districts, that's Greensprings and Patrick Henry. And so, as is true in quite a few of the growth areas, but certainly in that one, we would be working with two planning commission members to start with.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other comments from the commission? Well, thank you, Mr. Gillespie. Appreciate the work on that, you and Mr. Goodwin, getting us down the road this far. So look forward to seeing how this comes out.
Thank you.
And I believe, I believe that brings us, if there are no other things to be taken up during the work session, brings us to the end. And we will reconvene at 7:00 for the planning commission meeting. Work session's adjourned. Work session's adjourned.
Good evening, everybody. If you have not come down to sign up to speak tonight with one of the yellow cards, please come down and do so now, so that we have you ready to go. If you have not decided whether you want to speak or not, that's perfectly fine. After we run through all the cards, we will ask if there's anybody else who would like to speak. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and second. I'd like to make a change in the agenda. Under new business, the item recognizing, or resolution recognizing Commissioner, former Commissioner Woodward for his service, I'd like to move that up to just before consent agenda. Would the motioner and seconder agree with that change?
Certainly.
Very well. Any other comments on the agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brooks?
I would like to abstain from the vote tonight, since I was not here last month.
I understand, Mr. Brooks, you would like to abstain from the vote on approving the agenda and approving the planning commission minutes for last month?
Correct.
Very good. All right, any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brooks?
I would like to abstain from the vote tonight, since I was not here last month.
I understand, Mr. Brooks, you would like to abstain from the vote on approving the agenda and approving the planning commission minutes for last month?
Correct.
Very good. All right, any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brooks?
I would like to abstain from the vote tonight, since I was not here last month.
I understand, Mr. Brooks, you would like to abstain from the vote on approving the agenda and approving the planning commission minutes for last month?
Correct.
Very good. All right, any other comments? All in favor of approving the agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And, Ms. Johnson, are we going with voice vote tonight, or are we going with electronic?
No.
All right, very good. So you're going to do a roll call then?
I am.
All right, well, we'll change to roll call. Commissioner Ellis, you may have a duck in the background. I don't know, we're getting a little bit of feedback. If you could maybe mute that a little bit, we'd appreciate it. Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Brooks?
This is for...
Agenda approval.
You abstain.
Here.
Oh, you abstain, that's right.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Disasway?
Yes.
Mr. Kersey?
For.
Mr. Quarles?
Yes.
Mr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Dickerson?
Yes.
Very well, motion carries. Agenda is approved. We'll move on to approval of the planning commission meeting, minutes from the February meeting. And a motion and second for approval of the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Motion and second, do we have any comments on the minutes of the February meeting? Hearing none, then we'll have a vote for approval of that, Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Brooks?
He's abstaining again?
Abstaining.
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Disasway?
Yes.
Mr. Kersey?
Yes.
Mr. Quarles?
Yes. Mr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Dickerson?
Yes.
Very well, the agenda is approved. So, I'm sorry, the minutes are approved. So I'd like to move on now to item, what was item one in the new business, resolution recognize, recognizing Mr. Woodward for his service. Mr. Woodward is here, very good. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
I'm going to read this over here where it can be read into the record, if you don't mind. And then I'll meet you around front of it, that'll be fine. So, Mr. Woodward was with us for a number of years on the planning commission, and we'd like to express our appreciation tonight. The resolution reads, "On the motion of Mr. John Disasway, seconded by Ellis Quarles, Mr. Ellis Quarles, which carried a vote of seven zero, the following resolution was adopted: A resolution in appreciation of H. Manning Woodward III. Whereas H. Manning Woodward III was appointed to the Louisa County Planning Commission as a representative for the Louisa District and served one term from January 2020 through December 2023, serving two years as vice chairman, beginning January 2022. And whereas, through his leadership, dedication, knowledge, and expertise as a planning commission member, H. Manning Woodward III served and represented all citizens of Louisa County during that time, resulting in many accomplishments. And whereas, among his many accomplishments, he was the active in leadership in the planning commission and Louisa County community for the Louisa County Comprehensive Plan, the guiding document for future growth of the county, and the land development regulations, the zoning requirements for future growth. And whereas, during his tenure, Mr. Woodward III served the planning commission well and offered unique insights and perspective into the discussions and deliberations of the commission that best served the needs of the residents of Louisa County. And whereas, because of his knowledge and understanding of the community and the zoning laws and regulations of Louisa County, Mr. Woodward III acted on requests in a manner that was in harmony with the intended spirit and purpose of the ordinances, and kept his primary concern for the safety and welfare of all the citizens of Louisa County. And whereas, his tireless efforts and enthusiasm in representing Louisa County earned him the respect of local residents and fellow commission members, and served as an outstanding example of public service to the county. And whereas, the commission gratefully acknowledges his effort in bringing a sensible and reasonable approach to the application of county ordinances, and holds in high regard the distinction in service he gave on behalf of the citizens of Louisa, of the county. Now therefore, be it resolved, on this fourteenth day of March, 2024, that the Louisa County Planning Commission hereby recognizes and extends their appreciation and thanks to Manning Woodward III for his many years of dedicated service and leadership as a planning commission member representing the Louisa District. By order, John Disasway, Chairman, Louisa County Planning Commission." Thank you, Mr. Woodward. The planning commission, appreciate you. Of course, Mr. Woodward, the planning commission looks forward to working with you on the board, and know that you'll carry your knowledge of how things really work from the planning commission forward with you to the board. Thank you very much. Very well. Next up on the agenda is a consent agenda. We don't have a consent agenda this month, so we'll strike that. Following that, public address, I don't believe we have anything for the public address this month either. Item five is unfinished business. We did have a report during the, during the work session on gateways and focus areas. That is an item of unfinished business for us, and the outcome of that report is that the Gum Springs, Zion Crossroads, and Wears Crossroads areas will be looked at first for gateway and focus area consideration. That's an ongoing effort by the planning commission, working with staff. And I believe that's the only item of unfinished business we had left. Which moves us on to public hearings. The first public hearing tonight is rezoning 24-01 and CUP 2024-01, Louisa Heights LLC. Mr. Eglin.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the planning commission. My name is Tom Eglin. I'm the senior planner for Louisa County's Community Development Department. Before you tonight is a request from the applicant and owner, Louisa Heights LLC.
guiding document for future growth of the county, and the land development regulations, the zoning requirements for future growth. And whereas during his tenure, Mr. Woodward III served the planning commission well and offered unique insights and perspective into the discussions and deliberations of the commission that best served the needs of the residents of Louisa County. And whereas because of his knowledge and understanding of the community and the zoning laws and regulations of Louisa County, Mr. Woodward III acted on requests in a manner that was in harmony with the intended spirit and purpose of the ordinances, and kept his primary concern for the safety and welfare of all the citizens of Louisa County. And whereas his tireless efforts and enthusiasm in representing Louisa County earned him the respect of local residents and fellow commission members, and served as an outstanding example of public service to the county. And whereas the commission gratefully acknowledges his effort in bringing a sensible and reasonable approach to the application of county ordinances, and holds in high regard the distinction service he gave on behalf of the citizens of Louisa, of the county. Now therefore, be it resolved on this fourteenth day of March 2024, that the Louisa County Planning Commission hereby recognizes and extends their appreciation and thanks to Manning Woodward III for his many years of dedicated service and leadership as a planning commission member representing the Louisa District. By order, John Disasway, Chairman, Louisa County Planning Commission."
Congratulations, Manning.
Of course, Mr. Woodward, the planning commission looks forward to working with you on the board, and know that you'll carry your knowledge of how things really work from the planning commission forward with you to the board. Thank you very much. Very well. Next up on the agenda is a consent agenda. We don't have a consent agenda this month, so we'll strike that. Following that, public address, I don't believe we have anything for the public address this month either. Item five is unfinished business. We did have a report during the, during the work session on gateways and focus areas. That is an item of unfinished business for us, and the outcome of that report is that the Gum Springs, Zion Crossroads, and Wears Crossroads areas will be looked at first for gateway and focus area consideration. That's an ongoing effort by the planning commission, working with staff. And I believe that's the only item of unfinished business we had left. Which moves us on to public hearings. The first public hearing tonight is rezoning 2024-01 and CUP 2024-01, Louisa Heights LLC. Mr. Eglin.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the planning commission. My name is Tom Eglin. I'm the senior planner for Louisa County's Community Development Department. Before you tonight is a request from the applicant and owner, Louisa Heights LLC, for zoning 2024-01 to rezone approximately 3.1478 acres of a 11.37 acre parcel 41-187 from industrial general I II to industrial limited I I, and a conditional use permit 2024-01 to allow for the establishment of a mini warehouse and parking facility on 3.1478 acres of parcel 41-187. The property is located on Duke Street, State Route 797, just southwest of Davis Highway, State Routes 22 and 208, and is located in the Louisa Election District. The subject property is located in the Louisa Growth Area designated industrial. The planning commission has instructed staff to conduct a zoning analysis of each land use case. Parcel 41-187 is currently zoned industrial general I II. There is no evidence that the current zoning and land use is not economically viable. Therefore, if the property did not receive a rezoning and conditional use permit for a mini warehouse and parking facility, the current I II general industrial zoning would allow for a contractor's offices and shop by right, and the ability to apply for a conditional use permit for other industrial uses. Staff has determined that the proposed rezoning and conditional use permit will promote the 2040 plan goal of broadening the county's tax base. The Board of Supervisors adopted a public facilities plan on February 20th, 2024, as an amendment to the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Implementation of the recently adopted public facility plan allows the county the ability to identify the impacts of proposed development and offers the means to consider proposed mitigations. Staff has provided analysis of the proposed project on page eight of the staff packet, and the applicant has provided an analysis on the staff packet pages 28 to 30, labeled enclosure four. After the publication of the staff packet, the applicant provided an updated concept plan which shows a proffer ten-foot wide walking trail that would connect Duke Street to the existing Betty Queen walking trails. This is the first step in creating a pedestrian network in Louisa County. The current slide shows the proposed location of the walking trail at the southern portion of the project. On March 12th, the Community Development Department staff emailed the planning commission members the updated proffer letter from the applicant, which details requirements for site security and fire prevention. The proffer also lists the uses the applicant desires to obtain for the parcel's future as a result of the rezoning. A neighborhood meeting was held in Louisa County Public Meeting Room on November 8th, 2023, at 4:00 p.m., at which no citizens attended. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning, sorry, staff recommends approval of rezoning 2024-01 to rezone approximately 3.1478 acres of 11.37 acres of parcel 41-187 from industrial general I II to limited industrial I I, with the proffers provided, March 12th, 2024. Staff also recommends approval of conditional use permit 2024-01 to allow a conditional use permit for the establishment of a mini warehouse and parking facility with eight conditions detailed on staff packet pages 11 and 12. This concludes staff's report.
I'm going to hold questions for the staff right now and go directly to public comment period on this. So I'm about to open the public comment period. When I do, the applicant will be the first, as is our custom, is the first speaker. They'll have 10 minutes to speak, and then we'll hear from anyone in the public which is to speak on this. You'll be allowed three minutes. You'll have to, you'll be requested to state your name and your voting district. If you represent an organization, you'll have five minutes to speak. And then at the end of the public speaking, we'll have the applicant back for five additional minutes to speak on anything they heard during the public discussion. So the public comment period is open. Is the applicant here?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning commission. I think Mr. Eglin pretty much covered everything. We are enthusiastic about developing this lot, which is near the airport, adjacent to the airport, and I think our protocol has changed a little bit tonight because before the meeting, I met with Mr. Jarvis and Mr. Gillespie, and we, when we purchased the property that this is on, it was a total of about 60 acres. And we purchased it from the IDA, and this is the first parcel that we've developed yet. And without knowing the protocol to go through, I guess we overlooked the IDA, which we really didn't want to do. But, so we think it's best tonight to meet with the IDA first, to get their blessing on the use, and then come back the next planning commission meeting, hopefully, and try to get the approval that we're asking for tonight. We are basically downzoning the property. We're carving out uses that I think would negatively impact the area, the airport, as far as noise and clutter, and anything of that nature, as far as heavy manufacturing or anything like that. We want the industrial park to be very clean, light industrial, office, technology perhaps, and we're anxious to get started there and try to provide something that Louisa County is going to be proud of, as I'm sure you all want the same. So we have proffered. When I talked to Mr. Daniel, I represent JHB and Jefferson Home Builders, and when I talked to Mr. Daniel about a proffer as far as tying in the, the nature trail, he was all for it. You know, if it's going to help the community, he was very enthusiastic about that. So we're going to do that. It's going to be a little bit, a little bit of a challenge because there are wetlands that we need to address, and we're going to have to go through that wetlands delineation process and potentially build a boardwalk across the wetlands area. So we, we, we do want to tie in the trail to Duke Street with a 10-foot easement and a 10-foot nature trail, and we're also going to gate, gate the facility and fence it in as well. So it's going to be a very dynamic facility. It's going to be something to be proud of, and I think it's going to be very complimentary of what the rest of the industrial park is going to be too, once we finish it ultimately. So I have a couple pictures here of a couple recent facilities that JHB has built. One, one's older than the other one, and one is new in Orange County and near Lake of the Woods, and just going to give this to you to pass around. I'm here with our engineer too, Marvin Henchy, he's going to add a few words, and thank you for your time tonight.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, Marvin Henchy with Henchy and Vane's. I'm not going to add too much, I'm just going to touch on the layout. We replaced the entrance where we could get the best site distance along Duke Street. So that kind of governed how I laid out the site. We're going to have underground stormwater management so that we can have maximum use of the above-ground area. And just to clarify Gary's comment about the wetlands, the only wetlands impact that we foresee would be connecting the trail. And, but the development itself would stay out of the wetlands. And we're showing landscaping. So if there are any other questions, let me know. Engineering questions, and that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So next up is anybody from the public who would like to comment on this? Do we have anyone from the public who would like to comment? Very well, Mr. Eglin, is Mr. Gillespie handy?
He can be.
It would be very good. Mr. Gillespie, we discussed this earlier, but just to clarify, did you want, did you think it appropriate to continue the public hearing or to end the public hearing, since...
Mr. Chairman, the public hearing was duly advertised and noted in the paper. People had an opportunity to attend. I would, I would recommend to you that you close the hearing.
Okay.
And if anyone wants to comment to staff in the meantime, we can certainly forward the remarks on for your consideration at the next meeting, but I would not continue the hearing.
Very well. All right, then, no one from the public wants to come forward to comment on this, so at the end of the public portion, we do allow the applicant five minutes to address what they've heard, but I'm not sure there's anything you need to address from what you've heard or not heard, unless you'd like to, but, very well. So I'm going to close the public comment period. Public comment period is closed, and I believe, Mr. Kersey, you may have something for us.
Mr. Chairman, I have not had any input from the public for or against the proposal. It does seem to be in order, but since there are issues with the industrial authority, I would move that we defer action until our next meeting, and this be tabled until then.
Very well, so we have a motion on the floor to defer this until the next meeting, and a second from Commissioner Goodwin. Any further discussion on tabling this? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Disasway?
Yes.
Mr. Kersey?
Yes.
Mr. Quarles?
Yes.
Mr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Dickerson?
Yes.
Very well, the motion table carries, and so what I would like to do now, my apologies, some nights you have these kind of things where you just don't track. I skipped right over the public address period incorrectly, so I really need to go back and deal with the public address period first, so my apologies on that. The public address period is a time for citizens to talk to the planning commission about anything that is not on the agenda tonight as a public hearing. So this would be, if you have anything that you wish to say to the, the commission that does not have anything to do with the application we just heard, or with the Green Boot Solar application, now's the time to talk. We'll have time to talk, hear from you about the Green Boot Solar application when we take that CUP up. So again, the same rules for public comment apply. I'm going to open the, the public address period. Citizens will have three minutes to speak. If you represent an organization, you'll have five minutes, and I ask that you state your name and your voting district. Public address period is open. Is there anyone who would like to address the commission on something that is not on the agenda tonight as a public hearing? Very well, seeing none, we'll close the public address period, and I think now we've saved the meeting from, from doom. So we can move on here. Thank you for your indulgence in that. We move on to the next public hearing, CUP 2023-07, BW Solar. Mr. Eglin.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the planning commission. Again, my name is Tom Eglin. I'm the senior planner for Louisa County's Community Development Department. Before you this evening is a request from the applicant BW Solar Holding Incorporated and owners Dustin Madison and Megan Madison for a conditional use permit 2023-07 to approve a 60-acre portion of parcel 14-71 for utility-scale solar generating facility producing up to 5 megawatts of alternating current. Energy produced from the proposed Green Boot Solar project will connect to the Rappahannock Electric Cooperative Distribution Line off Gold Mine Road. Parcel 14-71 is 132.277 acres in total and is located between Gold Mine Road, Route 613, and Peach Grove Road, Route 621, in the Mineral Election District. The 2040 Comprehensive Plan's future land use map designates the project property as low-density residential in the Lake Anna growth area. The western portion of the property is adjacent to a parcel that is part of the Gold Mine Creek Agricultural and Forest District, which you can see in purple to the west and east. The current slides depict the concept plan for the Green Boot Solar project and details the dimensions of the required and proposed buffers. The property was zoned agricultural from the creation of zoning in 1969. The origin of the agricultural A II and agricultural A I zoning districts is worth noting. In 1996, Louisa County citizens with land zoned agricultural were given a choice for the property to be rezoned to agricultural A II or agricultural A I. This property was zoned to A I agricultural at that time. The owner submitted a land use amendment application rezoning 2017-05 to rezon the property from agricultural A II to general residential R II on November 21st, 2017. That application was withdrawn from the applicant, from, from consideration. The Board of Supervisors adopted a public facilities plan on February 20th, 2024, as an amendment to the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Implementation of the recently adopted public facility plan allows the county the ability to identify the impacts of proposed development and offers the means to consider proposed mitigation. Community Development Department staff has provided analysis of the proposed project on pages 38 and 39 of the staff packet, and the applicant has provided an analysis on staff packet pages 543 and 544, labeled as enclosure four in your application. A neighborhood meeting took place in Louisa County Public Meeting Room on October 25th, 2023, at 4:00 p.m., at which 30 individuals attended. And a neighborhood meeting also took place in Louisa County Public Meeting Room on November 1st, 2023, at which 21 individuals attended. Representatives of BW Solar gave a presentation at both meetings and answered questions for citizens. A list of the concerns and questions and comments from both of those meetings can be found on pages 36 and 37 of the staff report. The concerns range from construction traffic on Peach Grove Road to erosion and sediment leaving the site from the property and entering Lake Anna. The primary goal of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan is to preserve the Louisa County rural character, beautify its gateways and roadways, and accommodate future growth. Staff has been working with the applicant since the first application submission, September 25th of 2023. Staff packet pages 39 and 40 detail remaining items and concerns that the Community Development Department staff has that need to be addressed in the current submission prior to the Board of Supervisors meeting. The applicant has also received comments from VDOT for the use of Peach Grove Road and Fire and EMS for the project, which you can see on your screen. Both of these emails are included in your staff packet. Staff recommends 31 conditions for the requested conditional use permit for the Green Boot Solar project if it is approved tonight. And lastly, as tradition, I provide you our most up-to-date solar project map, and on this map, it shows you all of the projects that are approved, constructed, in construction or under review. I have a new tally for you. We currently in the CUP process, including this project, have 40.6 megawatts AC that have either gone through the planning commission or are being heard tonight, and that's a total of 611 acres, plus or minus, that have not received a final vote from the Board of Supervisors that are still in a CUP phase. As a reminder, the Board of Supervisors in the fall of 2021, if my memory serves me right, capped the total acreage of 9,800 acres for the county, or about 3% of the landmass, and currently we're sitting at 590 megawatts approved, or about 5,211 acres, plus or minus. This concludes staff's report.
Very well, any questions for the staff at this time? All right, then, we're going to move on to the public comment period. Same rules apply, as you just heard, when I opened the public comment period, the, as is tradition, the first speaker is the applicant, who will have 10 minutes to provide comments. Then we'll go to the public. Each citizen speaking will have three minutes to speak. If you're representing an organization, please let me know that, that will allow you to have five minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please state your name and your voting district. At the end, the applicant will have an additional five minutes to comment on anything they've heard. So I'm going to open the public comment period now. Public comment period is open, and turn it over to the applicant.
Hey, good evening, gentlemen. Thanks for your time tonight to talk about the Green Boot Solar project, and thanks for your time to, during the workshop commission. Came to our attention during that meeting that maybe a handful of you haven't had sufficient time to read the application. We'd like the opportunity tonight to kind of go through the presentation, answer questions, answer questions from the public, and come back next, planning commission next month and for a final vote. Okay, or I was going to let you guys kind of guide me on that.
It's, I will say, it's never a good idea to surprise the person that represents you in that district with things like that from the podium.
I just spoke with this about the Tom. Sorry.
Right before the meeting, we, obviously we had the work session, and BW Solar came to us right before the start of the meeting and suggested that perhaps they would want to offer to you the option to deferral after the meeting, at the end of the meeting. Go through the public comment period, perhaps, go through presentations, and allow them an opportunity to hear what citizens have to say, and allow you to have more time to read the packet and perhaps address any concerns in an additional meeting. They wanted to offer that option to you.
I apologize, I, I didn't know the protocol, that's what Tom and I discussed. And I was, I was prepared to present tonight, hear the vote, and go through all the public comments. I did not know that you guys had just received an application and had time to read it.
I appreciate that. Again, though, if, if this discussion was, you all having this discussion before the work session, it would have been good to hear about this.
Before the meeting, the regular meeting.
For the regular meeting. Well, all right, I mean, it's, it's always good to hear it, though, even if you walk up at the last minute, but, all right, well, thank you. So let's move on.
All right. All right, so we're here tonight to talk about the Green Boot Solar project. All right, so we're here tonight to talk about the Green Boot Solar Project, most of which you guys heard about tonight. We're seeking a CUP, I'm sorry, conditional use permit for Louisa County. Project's up to 5 megawatt solar project. If approved, it'll be the smallest utility-scale solar project in Louisa County. As you'll see in our application and the presentation tonight, this solar project meets all the, all the Louisa County solar ordinance requirements, and we've asked for zero exceptions. That's been since our application started in September. Parties involved have been working with the county staff. Here is BW Solar. I'm Bridget Kelly. I'm the development lead on the project. We're the applicant, solar developer, and asset owner. We also have Lance Pittman here. He's our Director of Engineering. Dustin and Megan Mattisman are the property owners. Dustin's here tonight representing his family. They're native Louisa County residents and owners of parcel 1471. Additionally, we have ERM, they are environmental consultants. They've been working on the project with us since, yeah. I know we have a short little window to talk, so I kind of wanted to hit on some project highlights, kind of, you know, set this project aside. Again, we meet all Louisa County ordinance, we've asked for zero exceptions. The project, it's important to us and to you to kind of keep the project in line with the rural character of Louisa County and in conformance with the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. In doing so, we've included a 300-foot buffer surrounding the project to ensure that the project would not be seen by its neighbors. Approximately 36% of the total acreage will be utilized for pollinators. Only 10% is required by Louisa County and the ordinance. Once the project is decommissioned after 35 years, the lifetime of the project, the owner will return the site to the pre-existing conditions, which is ag or forestal use, which will, again, conserves the rural way of life. Once constructed, very few vehicle trips are required, preserving rural character. Project's nice, quiet, tucked away, does not disturb neighbors at all once operational. Again, the project is only for 60 acres, as we discussed earlier, of the full 132 acres. I've given a breakdown, which you guys have seen before, of really how this is divvied up between, oh.
No, we have a screen here. We have a screen.
I only got 10 minutes. We, of the 60 acres, we're going to be building only on 15.7 acres. 300-foot buffer accounts for 14 acres. I'm going to go on and on, but undisturbed acres, about two and a quarter acres, et cetera. We can go through that. Just the point here is we're only asking for 60 acres, most of which is not going to be developed on. It's, it's protected. We've held two public neighborhood meetings end of last year, answered a lot of questions, and came back, and as you guys have seen, we've done a lot of revisions to our applications. A lot of that was to meet residential requests. The solar site itself, most solar projects in general require minimal county resources. We can go through that at the end, but it will generate tax revenue for the county over the lifetime of the project. Project will pay annual taxes, and it broadens Louisa County tax base. For a project of this size, the up to 5 megawatt, it should generate about $370,900 over the lifetime of the project compared to the current use at just about $300 to $500. There's just a quick location of the project, located in northern Louisa County, due west of Lake Anna. The 60 acres is identified here in blue. Quickly going through just the development process, you know, obviously we've been meeting with the county and the AHJs. We've gone in full through our studies, which include interconnection studies. That's all done with Rappahannock and Dominion. That's been approved. We're ready, ready to sign an interconnection agreement once we have the site permitted. And we've conducted all of our environmental studies. That's the critical issues, wetland dealing issue. We did that in full. That's been fully walked through on the site. Phase one ESA, threat and endanger and anything cultural. Everything came back very normal, no red flags, and very clear on how to permit the project. Here's the layout of our project, which you all have in front of you, multiple pages of the layout. Again, just going to go through this quick. It's an up to 5 megawatt project. It's a solar-only, there's no storage on this project. We're going to be using a single-axis tracker. The, we're going to be interconnecting to a 12.47 Rappahannock line that's dotted in yellow at the bottom of the page. You'll see that there. That's on site. Again, neighbors won't be able to see this from their properties, even if they were. We'll be using anti-glare panels as required by the ordinance. We've done the 300-foot buffer on all sides. We have a 75-foot wetland, 75 setback to all wetlands, and then the two ditches that run kind of north and south, that's in red there, that's 50-foot setback from the center line of that ditch. The equipment will be less than 12 feet in height and will incorporate an animal-friendly fencing. It's seven feet high with an anti-climbing device. If you see an orange on the side over there, that's the, again, the project details and the land details broken down. I'm not going to go through the construction plan, I'm going to leave that for questions. Just touch on the timeline for a project this size, estimated about four to six months, given no delays. If things were to proceed, you know, through the next couple of months on track through the Board of Supervisors, we'd estimate to begin in about Q2 of next year with the goal to end the project in 2025. Site should be pretty quiet outside of the project. You should, it should be very quiet, and especially due to the extensive buffers, and we'll meet all of the ordinance requirements. That's Monday through Friday, only building and nothing on Sundays. The stormwater and erosion control, I know this is a huge topic, you know, the main, what everybody wants to talk about. Lake Anna, what's the impact? We've got, we've incorporated plans of sediment and erosion control. We have our consultant here tonight to answer questions about that. So I'm going to leave that for the Q and A for the time being, and I wanted to touch quickly on our proposed access road. BWS is requesting that we put our access road off of Peach Grove Road rather than Gold Mine Road. I know that that's in the staff report, and it's preferred by the Louisa County neighbors and potentially county members. From our understanding, or not understanding, from what we have studied, the environmental impact of kind of building over Gold Mine Creek is going to have a huge impact, require a lot of, you know, permitting, and it's, it's highly not recommended from our end, but we can definitely talk about that. I know that was of concern from the neighbors, and I talked about it in length with Tom. As Tom stated, we have talked with VDOT. They've, they have approved our preliminary drawings proposing that the access road be placed in the center of Peach Grove Road. Again, traffic and transportation control be very minimal, 15 car trips daily during construction, and then probably one to two cars during the life of the project annually, just to do routine maintenance. Our landscaping plan, we can get into that in question and answers, but natural vegetation, obviously, with the 300-foot buffer, is going to serve as our primary landscape for the project perimeter. We've incorporated a 75-foot vegetation buffer on the east and west of the project area. Areas that remain, well, these areas will remain untouched unless there's bare spots in which trees will be planted. The northern area of the project, the only area which will be, will have trees impacted is the access road, if it's authorized to be planted there. South of the project will not be disturbed. That's where the Gold Mine Creek is. Shrubs and trees along the ditches that are outside of the 50-foot buffer, these may be removed. We're going to use grass and pollinators to help with the water flow, both of these helping against, protect against erosion. Obviously, we're going to do everything according to the county ordinance and Virginia DEQ. Here's our landscape plan. You have it in a hard copy in front of you. As Tom discussed, we've already been in communication with VDOT. They've approved the preliminary design, and of course, we'll get a full design approval if project's approved by Board of Supervisors. We've spoken with Captain Timmy Luck with Fire EMS. He's also approved the preliminary drawings with the request to just have a Knox box there, which we, which we do. We won't require any Fire EMS services, only in the event of an emergency. And post-construction, all developers, us including, we give onsite training to local fire station and first responders on how to counter an emergency onsite, may there be one. Again, solar projects in general, they really generate a little bit of financial benefits to the county, but require very little. The parks erects are not impacted, schools not impacted, sheriffs not impacted. Any waste is taken out of the county during, during construction and during decommissioning. Just lastly, want to touch on the communication that we've had with the neighbors. The landowner and myself met with a couple of the neighbors that are directly across the street from the project, some of them being okay with the project, some of them have attended the neighborhood meetings and voiced their concerns. Majority of the concerns during the two meetings we had were, of course, the impact on Lake Anna and the conditions and the construction entrance coming off of Peach Grove Road. So with, am I at 10?
You're at 10.
Okay. Sorry, I talked so fast. I wanted to hit on, and I know you guys didn't have time to really review, but this is a good project. It does meet all of your ordinance requirements. We have submitted this a lot of times, but it is not to say that, you know, we haven't been thorough or sent the right information. It's just been a timely process. You have a very thorough ordinance in place, and it's been a lot of questions and answering, and then some updating to our layout. The core of the application has not changed, studies haven't changed. It's a very straightforward project. It's a small project, and we're just here to do right by the landowner and right by the county.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, I have speaker cards, I have a number of speaker cards, and we want to hear from everyone. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to read the name off of the first one, and I'll read the name off of the person who should be in line right behind, and we'll cycle through that way, and we'll get through all the speakers tonight. So first up is Garney Horn, to be followed by Brian Coleman. So Mr. Horn, if you would come forward, please, and again, state your name and your voting district.
Garney Horn, Mineral District. The proposed plan of a utility-scale solar facility on Peach Grove Road does not give us enough information as to what BW Solar is doing to protect Gold Mine Creek and Lake Anna. The runoff from this project will go directly into Gold Mine Creek, 700 yards southeast, which feeds directly into Lake Anna. Sediment and erosion concerns need to be addressed before this CUP is approved. The lake is being studied currently for the hab problem, the algae problem, by Virginia Tech, Virginia Department of Environmental Quality, United States Geological Survey, Old Dominion University, and Lake Anna Civic Association. The Lake Anna Civic Association has spent a lot of money that has been donated by citizens, and over a million dollars that were donated by the Virginia legislation trying to fix the hab problem. The Louisa Board of Supervisors are also seeking federal money for this problem. How can we ask for money when we are actively adding to the problem? The Lake Anna Civic Association has done work in Gold Mine Creek, trying to fix the problem directly where the runoff of the solar facility is being proposed. County staff has asked for approval of an erosion and sediment control and stormwater plan with a surety bond posted with Louisa County prior to commencing on any land disturbance activity. I respectfully ask that you ask for the erosion and sediment control and stormwater plan to be completed and reviewed by agencies and the Army Corps of Engineers before the cup is approved to make sure that we do not add any more erosion and sediment to the lake, and that we protect Lake Anna, which is a crown jewel of Louisa County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. Up next, Brian Coleman, to be followed by Carrie Wilson.
My name is Brian Coleman. I'm in Louisa voting district. Me, my brother, and my mother, we're landowners that are on the east side of the proposed site where they want to build the solar field. We have a farm, a possibly 230-acre farm, and we've got concerns about erosion, of course, and of the construction of the solar field. Our fields by the USDA have already been determined as highly erodible land. So it leads me to believe that that land where the proposed site is, you know, would be highly erodible also. With saying that, we have concerns of erosion effects, potential risk impact. We have crop lands that are directly downstream from the stream that's feeding out where the proposed site is. So of course, we're worried about erosion, sediment, what, you know, that could bring on with our crop lands. The stream it runs directly that comes out from this site that they proposed where to build the solar field, it comes downstream, excuse me, right down, downstream behind our fields. So that's, that's a concern of ours. At a minimum, please have a high-level testing and studies performed on this site for potential erosion risk and what effects it could do, you know, if this was to be rezoned. And we're next door neighbors to the lake, so whatever comes to us is going to dump right into the lake. That's, that's one of the biggest concerns. Like I said, we have crop lands down there. We don't want to lose any more crop lands that we already have established, you know, to sediment coming down and, and water flooding our fields. I appreciate y'all's time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Next up, Carrie Wilson, followed by Anna Anderson.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. In Louisa Planning Committee, thank you for listening to us tonight. I stand here before you today to express my grave and concern regarding the proposed solar panel Peach Grove Road. There is nothing beneficial about this endeavors, several accepts, accepts for the, the project deeply that troubles me. Firstly, let me address the location of the road itself. Is, is that a dangerous spot and potentially accidents are waiting to happen? Parcel of the placing of the solar panel farm is such a, I'm sorry, I'm nervous. Let's see. Placing of the solar panel farms is such a precarious location only accelerates, accelerates the risk. Moreover, the chosen site sits upon a hill with natural springs that feed into Gold Mine Church or Gold Mine Creek, which ultimately flows into Lake Anna. Gold Mine Creek is already facing challenges, a contamination, sedimentations, and erosion. The land surrounding the creek, once feral, fertile fields, was now turned into swampy land, wastelands. Adding further stress into this delicate ecosystem is simply unacceptable. We have a responsibility to preserve this land for future generations, and we cannot afford to squander this opportunity. Before any logging or clearing takes place, all wetlands must be clearly defined and protected. A comprehensive stormwater plan must be presented by the developer and rigorously received by the appropriate agencies. Additionally, erosion and sediment control plan, including input on the Army Corps of Engineers and the imperatives before granting approval for the constitution, the condition, the CUP. Furthermore, Lake Anna is currently under scrutiny for harmful agal bloom by various esteemed institutions. And multiple organizations are investing time and resources to study and mitigating the issue facing the lake. Why are we willing to contribute to this further anymore to, let's see, an additional runoff of the solar panel farm? The lack of logic behind the proposal is glaring. Its proximity to streams, creeks, and Lake Anna itself raises serious concerns about the potential environmental damage. I implore you to reconsider this project and explore alternative locations within the county that do not propose such a risk to our waterways. In conclusion, the drawback of the location of the solar panel farm on Peach Grove Grove Road, Peach Grove Road, far overweight our premises believes that, that our prior, let's say, prioritize and preservation of our natural resource and choose to path that ensure the sustainable future of our community. Thank you.
Ms. Wilson, your voting district, please.
I'm sorry. Louisa.
Louisa, thank you very much. Yes, Anna Anderson, to be followed by Alan Bean.
Good evening Commissioners. My name is Anna Anderson, and I vote in the Mineral District. My husband and I were recently at an annual conference in which one of the guest speakers was Mr. Mark Bays, who was an urban forester with the State of Oklahoma Department of Food, Forestry, and Agriculture. Mr. Bays stated trees are the most important plant on our planet. Through photosynthesis, trees provide oxygen, they remove harmful gases by making the air we breathe healthier. They combat climate change, protect against flooding and water pollution, they cool our environment, they provide shade and habitat for many animal species, they conserve energy, and they promote healthy soils. Trees and solar panels are in competition with one another. Both are vying for space. So we, as stewards of our property, are left with the question So we, as stewards of our property, are left with the question, do we help our environment by planting trees or planning solar panels? I was in the same room a few years ago, as Mr. Eglin stated, when rezoning was requested for a subdivision on this same piece of property. I am once again here to defend the preservation of this property near my home. When this property was clear-cut over 10 years ago and before the current landowner, we would have summer afternoon thunderstorms. The rainwater runoff from these storms would flood Goldmine Road, leaving red mud in the ditches and in the road. VDOT would come and flag the road for high water. The standing pine trees were no longer there to protect the runoff. My concern then is the same as it is today. Being this property is near Goldmine Creek and our beloved Lake Anna, I am gravely concerned, as everyone is, over the water quality. Goldmine Creek receives water flow from as far west as Oakland and as far east as the town of Louisa. DEQ has already noted water quality in these waters is compromised. The property is currently in replanted pines. The pines are over 10 feet tall and maturing as projected. It does not make good common sense, in my opinion, to take property in replanted pines and bulldoze them down. This is not a good practice of our resources, especially when pine saplings are scarce due to sourcing. By removing these established pines, you are allowing a strong chance of an erosion situation that will not only affect Goldmine Creek and Lake Anna, but the safety of driving Goldmine Road. Goldmine Road is a high-traffic secondary road, used heavily for those employed by North Anna Power Station and commuters working in Fredericksburg or Culpeper.
Ma'am, your time is up.
Already?
Yes, I'm afraid so.
Yes, it does. I wasn't paying. So I'm asking you to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to say no to the solar panel. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Up next, Alan Bean. All right. Up next, Alan Bean, followed by Ken Ingersoll.
Alan's weaving on.
All right. Mr. Bean is not participating, then Ken Ingersoll, followed by Robin Horn.
Good evening. My name is Ken Ingersoll, and I live in the Mineral District. I also live on Peach Grove Road, and my property actually is waterfront to Goldmine Creek. I'm speaking tonight regarding the proposed solar farm project on Peach Grove Road. I'm not opposed to solar, but this project is not a good idea. We've heard in multiple venues, the lake is the economic engine of Louisa County. This project, as it has currently been revised, will contribute roughly $11,000 in additional tax revenue per year for 35 years. That amount of money is ridiculously small amount compared to the estimates we have heard for seen and addressing the hab problems at Lake Anna. We have six organizations performing various studies and implementing various hab mitigation efforts totaling tens of thousands of dollars, including one state grant of a million dollars. What message are we sending to our hab mitigation partners when we consider recommending a project with this kind of risk profile? Let's look here. This is a risky project. Every solar project done in Louisa County has had a runoff problem. Yes, the county has instituted new procedures and requirements since the first solar project six years ago, but based on what they've learned, we don't want this to be the first project on the lake and learn more valuable lessons at the expense of our, of our Goldmine Creek. Let's talk about the risks. There's been no solar erosion control plan performed on this project. The landowner adjacent has already talked to us about how his soil has been tested and has been declared to be highly erosionable. It's inconceivable that the land on which this project will be built has any different soil structure. We know the project property has already existing wetlands. Wetlands that will not, wetlands will not contain the water that will be running off this project once it has been cleared. In addition, the land across the street, which is roughly 10 acres, feeds into this property through an underground culvert. That water will enter this property, and with nothing to stop it, will accelerate down the hill of this property as it has a significant falloff in grade from the road to the bottom where the lake is. This project proposed to clear existing trees and replace them with pollinators. The amount of water consumed by pollinators is a fraction of the amount of mature trees. A tree will do 400 gallons of water a day. Pollinators, a few gallons a day. That's a massive difference. This project includes provisions to use nutrient and other credits to compensate for basically a project failure to meet sediment control requirements. Why would we even consider this? When this project fails, what good is it to Louisa County residents, lake users, and Peach Grove residents that other areas of Virginia will have good working projects and we have increased runoff and erosion issues in our lake? In the past 20 years or so, the water depth off my dock has decreased by 12 to 18 inches because of sediment. After every hard rain, I can sit on my deck and see a brown silt stain flowing down Goldmine Creek. Literally, it goes from shore to shore, and I can see it travel down the creek, right into Lake Anna. As the stain goes, when you have a hole, stop digging. We have a well-known and documented hab problem at Lake Anna. It doesn't take much of a Google search or reading the newspapers to see hab warnings every year for the past five years being publicized. The hab problem will eventually start affecting property values, service business revenues, and tax revenues if we don't get this problem under control. And this solar project is the wrong direction, the wrong project at the wrong time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bean. All right. I appreciate the enthusiasm, but we'll move faster without the applause here. So Ms. Horn, you're up next, followed by Noma Bean.
My name is Robin Horn. I'm in the Mineral District. The proposal for the solar project on Peach Grove Road has more questions than answers. BW Solar will be taking down approximately 13 acres of mature trees. It will become a logging operation. Last time this land was logged, every time we had a hard rain, the lake would flood, leaving red mud coming up Goldmine for days. The erosion was harmful to Lake Anna. When they logged the property years ago, the trees that were left were in wetlands. Has BW Solar marked all the wetlands? To this day, we still get a wall of mud coming up the lake from Goldmine when there's a particularly hard rain. When all the trees are taken down and there's nothing but pollinators and small saplings to stop the water, will this destroy Lake Anna? In looking at the newest proposal under the post-construction stormwater management, I noticed a comment. Other options for water quality compliance may include conserved open spaces and purchase of nutrient credits. A nutrient credit is essentially if a developer cannot achieve the required nutrient reduction on their own property, they can buy credits from other locations where improvements have been made. Developers, both private and public, can meet part of the stormwater treatment requirements by purchasing these credits generated off-site. The runoff of this property is 700 yards from going directly into Goldmine Creek. Getting a credit for some other part of the lake or even another part of the state that did it right is not protecting Lake Anna. The lake has been studied for hab by six different agencies. Tax dollars and private money has been donated to study and fix the hab problem. Goldmine Creek seems to get the algae bloom first on the lake. Goldmine is where Lake Anna Civic Association has performed several mitigation programs to try and figure out how to stop the hab. The runoff and erosion sediment from the solar facility will flow directly into Goldmine. How can we keep asking citizens of the lake and the state, and now we're seeking federal money, to protect the lake when the solar plant would be part of the problem? Purchasing a nutrient credit because BW Solar cannot do their job is not what we need to do to protect Lake Anna. County planning staff has listened to the citizens on Peach Grove Road, and I agree that county staff that the entrance of Peach Grove, the entrance of the solar facility should go on Goldmine. It's a better maintained road. I would respectfully ask that the erosion and sediment control plan be established and reviewed by appropriate agencies, including the Army Corps of Engineers, prior to the approval of this CUP. The complete stormwater plan by the developer be reviewed by appropriate agencies prior to the approval of the CUP. We need to protect one of Louisa's most important assets, Lake Anna.
Thank you, Ms. Horn. Noma Bean is next, to be followed by Marie Jones. She's coming? Oh, very good. Very good. All right.
Hello, Mr. Chairman and Louisa Planning Committee. My name is Marie Jones, and I'm in Mineral District, and I also live on Peach Grove Road. And I'm here to discuss or speak about the Green Boot Project or the BW Solar. And I basically would like to speak on my opposition regarding the Green Boot Project proposed location on Peach Grove Road. To the committee, I would like to ask for an erosion and sediment control plan be implemented, reviewed, completed, and studied by all agencies and the Army Corps of Engineers before the conditional, um, conditional use permit is approved. And then the last part that I just want to speak on is in reference to an email that was sent out regarding speaking to the residents on Peach Grove Road back on September 25th. And I can just attest that no one in my residence or anyone residing in my house was ever spoken to regarding this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Just to, just to clarify, was, is Noma Bean not going to speak?
Oh.
Okay. Then we'll move on. Next up is Joe Cunningham, to be followed by Ben Outland.
I'm going to lose my voice halfway through this, I think. I'm going to be short. But I, I studied everything that was submitted on the CUP, and I came back to the same problem of erosion on the lake. And I can, I agree with everything that's been said up till now. They kind of took the words right out of my mouth. But what I'd like you to do, if you have some time or capability now, is ERM took a lot of pictures out there when they're doing their soil testing. And I need you to take a look at photo 36, photo 42, photo 44, and take a look at, at the damage that was done to this land 10 years ago. 36 will show a gouge in it that you'd fit three school buses in, side by side, probably a little more room than that. It was a tremendous volume of water that happened. I don't know if it was a 50-year storm or 25-year storm, but there was a lot of damage done to that land. It all ended up, I'm, I have 800 feet of waterfront on the river, and I know where it all went. It went right in front of my house. I'm, I'm walking in probably nine inches of, of silt right now. But take a look at those photographs that are in the CUP and see how you're going to mitigate the erosion. I know we have nice pictures of silt fences, and we have comments that we're going to do everything that the DEQ says, and we have, we're going to agree with everything that the county wants. Take a look at those pictures, and you tell me how a silt fence is going to stand up against the, the energy that was created during that 50-year storm. There's another 50-year storm coming. Way things are going, it may be 10 years from now. But sooner or later, it may not be during the course of this construction. Sooner or later, there's going to be another storm that's going to go ahead and, and, and take those ravines that are already carved into the ground out there, and it's just going to run right into Goldmine again. So take a look at that, and, and when we talk about stormwater and erosion protection plans, keep those pictures in your mind when they, when they come up with a plan. I mean, we're not talking silt fences. We're talking dams to stop the water flow that's coming through there. There's a lot of water flow. Ken mentioned there was 10 acres north of the site. It's not 10 acres. It's more like 25 acres. It's coming through a 24-inch VDOT culvert pipe. That's 18 cubic feet per second. There's a lot of water running through there. I don't know where it's all coming from, but there's a lot of water in that ravine. And the site is like a plateau. It's got two ditches carved through it running north and south. They really are carved out. Take a look at 40, I think it's might be in the 29th, but it's a 520 series. Just go through those pictures and take a look at the ravines that are existing out there, and you tell me how you're going to stop that water from getting into Goldmine. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cunningham, could you state your name and voting district for?
I'm Joe Cunningham. And Earl?
Thank you. Next is Ben Outland, followed by Linda Collins.
My name is Ben Outland, in Mineral District, and I live on Peach Grove Road, real close to this little project that they want to do. And I am opposed to it. My wife is opposed to it. I got five brothers that own property down there on that road that are opposed to it. Now, it's just not going to work. Elevation is your main problem. Elevation. Everything that happens up on this project is sooner or later, it's going down to the water, and it's going to contaminate the waters of Lake Anna. Okay. Now, you all got kids. I got kids, and you got grandkids. They are the ones that are going to really suffer in the long term. Looking at a solar panel system really don't bother me at what it does. The location will not work. It don't take a genius to figure it out. Location will not work. The man that wants to do this, that wants to have a solar panel, that's fine. He needs to buy another piece of land where it won't contaminate the rest of us, and he just move on. I move on all the time. When things don't work, you do something else. All right. Now, I don't think there's been enough studying on erosion and sediment controls. I think you need to get some outside people coming here, like that other people I said, four, five other people said, the Army Corps of Engineers, and maybe some other type of outside agency to study this, because I only went to 12th grade, and I know for sure that the elevation is incorrect. It's almost like sheet runoff. And if y'all got the time, I'm assuming you are the supervisors, maybe y'all can go down there and walk over that piece of property, and you might come to the same conclusion that I have. I don't know how much more to tell you than that, that I'm 100% in opposition of it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Outland.
You're welcome.
Next up is Linda Collins, and that's the last card I have.
Good evening, Commissioners, planning Commissioners. My name is Linda Collins. I'm in the Mineral District. I am here to ask you to be careful about your decision-making about allowing BW Solar to install a solar farm in the Peach Grove community. I believe BW Solar proposal is not in the best interest of the people in Peach Grove community. We have lived in this community all our lives. We have not, and we do not want the solar farm. We were told that a representative from BW Solar spoke to the people in the community. Well, in my community, Leon Jones, Brendan Thurston, Nikki Jones, Irving Jones, Donna Robertson, Samuel Thurston, John Stewart, Linda Collins, Sherman Collins, live right there in Peach Grove area. Then, nobody spoke to us. So if you said you made a study and you missed all of us, and we have been there over 60, 70, or 80 years, and our parents have been there, so we feel that you didn't respect our opinions. So we are not for the farm. And the way they look for the entrance is a dangerous place. It's right across the road from where my brother live, and that's Samuel Thurston. And we want you to consider a study of erosion and sediment, because when that get in your gardens, you can't grow any plants. And a lot of us live on our garden. And that's, when you live next to a solar farm, it can be harmful to your health. We are in age, okay? Radiation doesn't come from the panels, but it comes from the distribution that they hold, the distribution, district, industrial equipment that holds that power. And it also affects our garden. We asking you to consider not building that solar panel in the Peach Grove area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. All right. So that's all the cards I said is I have. But if anybody else would like to speak, now, we can continue on and hear from anyone else who wishes to come forward. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak tonight?
In response to?
Any member of the public that wishes to speak. Very well, then, we'll have the last speaker as the applicant with five minutes to discuss anything that they've heard.
I'm going to, it was over to Dustin Madison, the property owner, and this promoter and deputy.
Very good. Thank you.
So my name is Dustin Madison. I own this property that we're talking
This, I own this property that we're talking about. I think we've all figured that out by now. I guess I'll just respond to what, what I heard more than anything else. And it was erosion and runoff. And those are the real concerns that we, that's what we should be here to talk about. And those are the two big things that, that matter the most when we talk about anything on farms, on sloped land, anywhere where we've got drainage. I'm a farmer. I deal with drainage every day. I very much understand what we're getting at. Um, I want to kind of clarify a couple parts that I noticed and what we talked about. One, this parcel does not touch Gold Mine Creek. I think we've mentioned that a couple times. It does not. It comes down, it hits an intermittent stream that is running pretty good right now because it's, we've had 20 inches of rain in the last two and a half months. But typically in the summertime, it's pretty dry. Uh, it ebbs and flows, it's an intermittent stream. That goes, uh, we had a number up there, several hundred yards before it intercepts Gold Mine Creek, which is right there at the big swamp. Everybody knows Gold Mine Creek Swamp. Before we, uh, before the state or the county or whoever did it fixed that bridge, that was nothing but a mud pit every time it rained. So we've got a long ways before we actually get to any of that. All that, all that space is, is currently, I think, people, I did it too, a few people have mentioned. That space can get muddy. Um, that water can get muddy. If you go down that creek and get to Gold Mine after a hard rain, it sure can. And they mentioned a few years ago when the, uh, when the timber was cut, it can. Right now, there's pines on that land that are, they're not as tall as I am. Uh, it probably still can. And there's more pines to be cut. It'll happen again. I, I really think that we're talking about this thing, we're going to fix more problems than we've actually, than we have to experience right now. We're going to put filter strips in. I, you can check the map. I think there's about 3,000 feet of filter strip that we're installing along ditches. It's 15 acres of disturbance. It's 200 feet of filter strip for every acre. Um, yeah, it, there is a problem right now. It's nothing but dirt. It's never been anything but dirt. It was pines, it gets cut. It's pines, it gets cut. You got 10 or 15 years of pines trying to grow when we still have an erosion problem. So I guess to, to address that problem of, uh, of erosion and sediment, like, I think we're going to see an improvement just because of those filters. That, they don't exist right now. They're, the pictures the gentleman mentioned, probably, I don't have them in front of me, but I know what they look like. There's no filter there. It's dirt and sapling pine trees. The other thing I wanted to hit on real quick was that, uh, we heard a few people mention erosion plans and sediment control plans. And that's, that's conditional of this CUP. I, I think we addressed it. We can't move forward with this project without having those plans in place. It's incumbent on this CUP before that can happen. If you vote yes today, we move on, or you vote, uh, you vote yes whenever you do vote, we move right on. If we don't get that ENS plan put together, this doesn't matter. We move on and do something else. Um, it's, it's 100% conditional of this project. So I'm glad people bring that up because they should. We've seen issues around the county where that's, where that's a real problem. But, a, and I don't, you know, their problem is, that's different kinds of problems. When you go around the county, we're talking about a much smaller site, more laid out, more, uh, more kind of contained. I guess what I'm just trying to tell you is that we've, we've kind of got that covered because this CUP that we're after is, it requires us to do all that. We can't kind of slip around the back door and not do it. You're basically, when you vote yes, you're saying yes, you have to do that. That's what you're voting yes for. Yes, you have to go do a sediment control plan. Yes, you have to make sure it matches up with the county and with the, um, DEQ. Um, but yeah, I think those are the two things, uh, that I can really hit on that I think we kind of heard over and over tonight. You're not really supposed to leave any time on the table when you stand up here, but y'all are tired of looking at me. So I'm going to ask you to, uh, I'm going to ask you to vote in favor of this project and, uh, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Madison. All right. With that then, I'm going to close the public address period. Public address period is closed. Um, and I'm left with a little bit of a quandary, uh, but we had a handful of questions that we wanted to get answered during the public, or during, during the public hearing tonight. Is BW Solar ready to answer the questions that were discussed during the, um, during the work session?
Yes, yes. And if there is anything that you have additional questions, we take those back and come back with additional.
All right. Very good. Then, um, then I'd like to go ahead and, um, move on and get those questions at least asked and answered on the table before we, uh, explore any motion to continue this or table this for another month. Very good. So, um, so, uh, there were several of them. I think, um, I wasn't keeping score on all of them. Do any of the Commissioners have any right now they'd like to ask before, Mr. Brooks?
I've got some questions.
Okay, we'll start over here and come back to you.
Is the engineer here?
I believe so.
Engineer?
Yes, that, that's correct. My name's Lance Pittman. I'm the Director of Engineering with BW Solar. Licensed professional engineer also.
Thank you.
And, I'm sorry, and we do also have civil engineer here represented. So we may be tagging on depending on where the questions go.
The pre and post drainage discharge. No, Mr. Madison made a statement about we may be improving the situation. Is your discharge at the creek more or less after you completed the site?
Uh, now, go ahead.
Less. I mean, the post-construction condition has less discharge than the pre-develop, development condition.
Yes. And let, let me give a little background about why that would be less. All right. It's going to be less because we have proposed, uh, some drainage basins and we have them temporarily when the construction's going on, and we have them planned for permanent. So drainage basins take priority over where the solar panel's going to go. So if solar, if the drainage basin needs to be a little larger, we use fewer solar panels.
Y'all have temporary basins during construction and you also have permanent that will be there through?
Yes, sir.
35 years.
That's correct.
To protect what's been done.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
I, I haven't seen your, your plan, that, you know, narrative of these, you know, drainage issues, but had y'all addressed during construction, you can handle the runoff of the slopes to you and, uh, I call it a wet weather swale.
Yeah. There, there's several methods and you can speak to it. If, you know, I'll, let me cover it and then you cover anything that you think would be additional. Uh, there's straw bales, there's sediment fences, I mean, sit, silt fences. Uh, there's also, we can do temporary, uh, you know, grass as far as growing, when the, when the, you know, grass can grow depending on the season of its construction. Uh, there's also the, uh, compaction, you know, so we don't, if we disturb soil, we don't just leave it there disturbed, we actually will go and compact it. So that's either, uh, a big roller or, uh, you know, heavy, you know, extremely heavy machinery to compact that so that soil does not leave that site.
Okay.
Yep. And so what else would you like, uh, that you think that would be additional to help?
Yeah, we have like two, uh, two temporary sediment trap and the one temporary sediment basin. And we also, we also have diversions to divert the water into them during the construction. So we will make sure there's no sediment land and water flowing out of the site during the construction.
And let me, I'll give you the drawing number that will help reference up where some of this is located.
Tag at page 124.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Tom.
124.
Yes, sir.
Is that a drainage plan or?
A drainage plan, I think a couple pages after that. Uh, before, after that, uh, page 124.
All right. That's, thank y'all.
Uh, yeah, sure. And then if I could take just a moment as far as on you, that, that intertwines with that, uh, the solar panel, when rain, when rain does hit it, it sheds. Solar panels are a little bit smaller than the sheet of plywood, depending on which model. And so that solar panel, and there could be eight, 10 feet between one row and the next row. That rain hits it, it's coming off and it's going to land on the grass. So this is not, think, you know, it's not like it's a 15-acre parking lot. That's not what, and there's also space between the solar panels. So yes, it's approximately 15 acres, but as far as on solar panels that's covering it, now we're, you know, it's, it's a fraction of that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. We'll have more later, but it's all from there, Ms. Chairman.
Mr. Goodman?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I've got a number of questions. One's just curiosity. Will state and federal, um, regulations allow you to plant pollinators in wetlands?
Uh, I'll have to defer. Do you know if, uh, they'll out?
I didn't think they would let you.
I think I know what you're asking.
Yeah, I didn't think you could do any disturbance.
Is the map right there?
Yes.
You're talking about this spot here?
Everywhere the pollinators cross the wetlands.
Okay.
Well, state and federal regulations allow you to do that?
So?
To plant pollinators?
You can plant into a wetland, you just can't disturb the surface.
How you going to plant without disturbing the surface?
So a wetland might not be water, right? It could be a wetland that doesn't have water and it could still be, it's still be declared a wetland.
Okay.
But, but I know what you're asking. Um, you're asking me, I would be asking about this spot here?
No, I'm actually asking where the yellow polka dot crosses, crosses over the wetlands. You're showing that as being a, a planted cultivated area with pollinators.
Right. So yes, you can plant, you can plant anything, you can plant property, you can plant grounds, you can plant anything into a wetland.
Okay.
But you cannot excavate it, you can't dig a tree stump out.
Okay. It was like I said, a curiosity because I honestly didn't know. Um, I don't know how this is going to proceed tonight, but if it is deferred, as you suggested, will you be able to answer the eight, uh, points that staff says are still missing from the packet by the time we meet again?
Yes.
You will have it completed?
Yes. Yes, yes. And let me add a little bit of context to this. We've, uh, as Bridgette had mentioned, we've taken zero exceptions from day one. We have had numerous reviews. We've been asked to, to put additional labels, additional text, uh, additional drawings, uh, and we have done that. Uh, so the content has not changed. So, uh, some of that is new to us as far as what the eight that has come out. We just also recently have seen that and we said, sure, yeah, we'll, we'll go again. We'll add additional labels. Um, and so, sure, that's a long answer. Short answer is yes.
Okay, good. That, and one last, Ms. Chairman.
Mr. Goodman?
I would like to also see in your civil engineering analysis, for every inch of rain over the entire watershed area, how many gallons are going into those ponds and what is the volume of those ponds?
You know, we, we can provide that in the, in the design analysis.
Okay, good. I'd like to see that because I'd like to know at what point the ponds are going to fill and just overrun and lose their effectiveness.
Yeah, that is a normal design. We will provide that.
Thank you, sir, both of you, and thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Before we go on with questions, I just wanted to point out, um, that, uh, we did receive numerous letters from citizens through email. Uh, all of these letters have been captured and are a part of the record for the meeting. So, uh, they have been sent to all the planning commissioners. We have them and they are part of the record. So let me just.
May I say something else on the grading topic since we've?
You may.
On here. Uh, we are not doing heavy grading. This, the land is already suitable for the slope of the solar panels. Um, so we may do some minor grading. So if we see a small crest, we would, you know, level that if we, you know, if that didn't meet them tolerance. When I say small, it's going to be negligible. I have walked that land. I have been doing engineering for years. That land is suitable for very minimal grading.
I had several questions from earlier. Uh, I want to go to, um, one in particular, trying to get clarification that I mentioned before. Uh, I was actually able to find it on packet page 122 in the post-construction stormwater management section. The statement is, uh, and the, the setup is that you have a temporary sediment basin number one located on the property and that. You have a temporary sediment basin number one located on the property. It will be converted to a permanent stormwater management pond for management of runoff peak flow rate and. Do not help this matter either, Mr. Weaver. I think that's a good idea.
Nice tone.
Yeah. I won't do the setup again. The statement I'm questioning is, says, "It is assumed that the permanent stormwater pond will have a sma, a similar footprint to the temporary sediment basin one. In this scenario, up gradient diversions or berms could be used to redirect upstream off-site flow to bypass the site and convey onsite flow towards the ponds." So, uh, my question in reading this, what I don't understand, right now, none of the improvements exist on the property. So flow from off-site comes through the site, passes through and goes out. Uh, it appears to me that there's some intention to divert flow that would normally come on and pass through the site off-site. And what, um, I'm asking, what effects are that going to cause for adjacent property owners and, uh, adjacent, uh, property that is not studied and is not improved by this particular, uh, project?
Have we gone to the one, one, I think, one, two, four? Okay, one, two, four.
You may want the microphone.
Oh, yeah. I, I might need to point it out.
Okay.
I will, I will introduce again. So, uh, so yes, the water now flows from north to south. And the, based on the contour, this is the high point. So the water come here will just sweep. There is one ditch here. There's another ditch here. So before the product, so water will come here, sweep here. And now the water here, uh, will start into the, like, side, it will sweep here, sweep here, this way and this way. And so this change is very minimal. And it is the, the path before, go here, here, here. And now is the, go here, go this way, go this way. This change is very minimal. And, uh, also, uh, you have questions?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to get to an understanding. It says, "Up gradient diversions or berms could be used to redirect upstream off-site flow to bypass the site." So is that off-site flow that comes onto the site now?
No, because we will have diversion here in the, in the top. So the offset of water will not go into our site. It will sweep here because we have diversion here. So part of it will go this ditch, part of it will go this ditch.
And where does it go from there?
Then this two ditch, that's the, we, we didn't touch the ditch. So ditch is keep as the original. So this ditch will go this way, this ditch will go this way. So, I mean, that's the, that's what they did.
All right. So it looks like the western diversion will go out. Let me, let me just, um, let me just say that it's all still on your site.
Yes.
Because the site is the entire area. So you're diverting flow, uh, around the solar panels.
Yeah.
Through the western ditch that comes down that appears to bypass the, uh, the sediment pond that you're setting up, that you're going to turn into the permanent. And instead, I would have to say goes into Gold Mine Creek. Maybe I'm wrong, but it looks like it's going to head right in there, which is what it does now. Um, the, uh, on the eastern side, it looks like, it's hard to say, but if, if what you're saying is true, it's going to flow through the solar panels on the northeast side, down into that ditch and flow down and bypass the stormwater pond as well. So, so if the goal is to, all right, so what, what we're doing, it looks to me like, is, um, bypassing flow that would normally come down the center part of the project there where all the panels are and wind up in your stormwater control pond. And instead, you're, you're diverting that around to avoid the stormwater control pond and going into Gold Mine Creek. That's what it looks like to me. And that seems to be what you're saying in the text, but I'm trying to clarify that.
Because like the offset, oh, sorry, offset of water is not being disturbed. So you're just, you assume it's clear water, you're going to go to the downstream.
Let me see, I, we do accept that water and that water does, we're not, we're not trucking, we're not putting a line where it's, that water is. We do accept that water and that water does, we're not, we're not trucking, we're not putting a line where it's that water does. Not gonna flow across that site. That water does flow across that site. And that water, that water has a 300-foot buffer, which is where we found those trees, there's a 200-foot pollinators. And that water can shed and come in here.
But it appears.
We're not, we're not building a wall that's that, that water's not about to access.
I understand, but it appears from what the gentleman just said is that it does bypass your stormwater basin.
It does that now.
I understand that. But part of the purpose in putting a stormwater basin in for the improvement you're doing is to manage the flow, since you're doing a project here, and your statement is that the flow would be reduced going out. So I'm trying to figure out if you're bypassing all of your flow to avoid your stormwater pond, how are you reducing the flow that goes out?
So this onsite area, this will flow to this pond, and then it will, this pond will release it in the lower discharge.
Yeah.
So, so offset is still same with before. So for all that part, it become less, and overall, it become less.
Yeah. And the problem I'm having with the whole concept here is projects that I have worked on, when you look at the entire project, which is the pink outline, magenta, to be maybe more specific around the whole thing, you have to deal with the environmental impact within the project there, the entire scope. And right now, it seems to me like what you all are attempting to do is to minimize the flow that goes into your stormwater management pond rather than address the stormwater flow that goes through the entire project and deal with it. Either hold it up, release it slowly, do something else to deal with it prior to discharging it downstream into Gold Mine Creek. So this is what I'm having trouble with, trying to understand why this is a good thing, what you're proposing.
If we take this back and let's do right up on this and we'll help clarify that.
So, yeah, two ways, like, one way is what we just said, and another way is what you said. We can let water flow, like, all the offset of water flows into our pond. We can do that. But in that case, we will, we need to increase the pump side. Our pump side is designed based on the water flowing to it. And in that, yeah, we can do that. But in that way, like, just, we need to spend more money to build a bigger pond. And we will also have less, like, solar, solar panel here.
Well, and this is, this is the impact I was trying to figure out. It seemed to me like you're gonna wind up needing a whole lot more stormwater control down there. And if you have more stormwater control, it's possibly gonna impact your solar array and possibly impact the viability of the project. That's why I'm trying to get to the answer here on this.
Yeah, correct. Okay. But it's also one solution we, we can, all the water flowing.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Goodman?
While we're on that page, it's not the same page as is there, but it is page 122. I'm looking at your figures on drainage areas and the acreage for sediment trap one, sediment trap two, and sediment basin one. If I add those acreage, acres up, I come to about 15, which is within your project size, 15 acres. Seems to me that you are totally discounting that whatever the neighbors have said, one said 15, the other one said 25 acres, that are draining uphill of Peach Grove Road and coming through that culvert. Because that's additional acreage that's not reflected in these figures. These figures add up to 15.
You exactly come wrong, but we also took that culvert into consideration, water flow. That water is contained, well, not contained, but that water that comes through that culvert on your Peach Grove Road is going into these, into this.
Well, I understand that, but your drainage area has to include that. Because when I asked you earlier to get me the figures on, for every inch of rain, what's going into these retaining ponds? That land has to be included.
It is, yes, sir.
Well, it's not on this chart, is what I'm saying. You give me the stor- Sir, let me finish. You give me the storage volume of each one of these facilities and you give me the drainage area. You're not including all the drainage area. So when he figures his one inch and he multiplies it by 15, that ain't all of it. Excuse my language, I'm just talking straight.
It's okay, man. I'd rather you talk straight, that way I understand. I'm with you. Yes. And when you asked for that and we said, yes, we would give those calc- Yeah, thank you, Tom. Yes, when you asked for that and we said, yes, we would give you those calculations, that water and these calculations does include, or this land does include water coming through. So you will see that in our calculations.
Okay.
We will submit.
I'd like to see what's coming out of that pipe in addition to the 15 acres.
Yes, yep, yep, understood.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So earlier I had asked about the power line, how that was identified as part of the project. I mean, that is part of the project. We see a dotted line for the power line there, but it's unclear to me how the power line meets the setbacks and will be considered for the setbacks since it runs right along the adjacent property owner's property line there at Gold Mine Road. How does that meet the, I mean, we have setbacks for the property. How does that line meet the setbacks for the property?
Okay.
So we, um-
Project, I mean.
We kinda went back and forth on this one with staff to figure out exactly what that line needs to do. I don't think we have something that clearly says that line needs to have the 300-foot buffer. I think it was suggested by staff to try to maintain that buffer, but there was never, and Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, you're not gonna hurt my feelings. But I don't, nobody really had a clear cut, this is what you need to do. So we had a few different options. One, we did it, we did it like 60 or 100 feet off that line, property line on the west side going south. I think it was suggested to try to maintain the 300, just because we already had it on the project site. Let's maintain it going down. And that was fine. If it needed to move, it needs to move. But I think the consensus we ended up with, with staff, was stick with the 300, go with it. If somebody has a better idea, we can figure out the better idea, but that's, that's where we were directed.
I see. All right. Well, Mr. Madison, since you're at the podium, let me ask a question or two of you from your background in this sort of thing. Can you characterize what the soil type is there, right there in the project site where the solar array is going?
How deep in the weeds do you want me to get?
Not too deep in the weeds. Just consider I'm not an agronomist. Consider I'm just somebody in a suit and tie that wouldn't know any better.
Okay. All right. So you could probably classify the whole place, the whole 60 acres, as like a sandy loam. As you get, as you get down to that lower spot, it gets a little siltier. But generally, if you looked up a soil map right now, it's gonna say sandy loam a lot of times. Might say them in a different order, but it's gonna say that a lot. Real similar to most of the land around it. As you go closer to Lake Anna, it gets a little bit more sandy and a little bit more silty, a little less loamy. If you were to look at like a, like an agriculture productivity map, if that kinda resonates, this, this land doesn't have any of those soils. I don't know why. There's a little bit on the south side, but mainly on the top, a few along the edges. Closer to where you see the fields over there to the east, it kinda dips into that. On the west, there's some forest land, but there is no real agricultural. It's certainly not prime farmland. It's only little sections that we've considered significant farmland. Just to that point, as you go further south, it gets loamier. And by that, I'd say like, for comparison, you couldn't put a drain field down, probably down there where, close to where the sediment basins are. You couldn't do a drain field. That would kinda give you like an equivalent for what, what kinda soil type it is.
All right. So, so would you say that it's, it's good for growing most anything or marginal or not? The area with the solar panels, let's-
The top half of the project site, pine trees, maybe some fescue grass. The bottom half, poor pine trees.
Grass in the bottom half?
You could get grass to grow. I mean, like we would have in this thing, we'd have, you know, pollinators because pollinators actually grow where it doesn't, where nothing else does. I mean, that's kinda the point of how we set it up there. But, I mean, like a crop, you really wouldn't do much. Once you get to land that one perk, things don't grow great.
That's, that's kind of, that's kinda where I was going. How well can you get grass to grow after you've installed solar panels?
Depends on what kinda grass. And if you tell me how much rain we're gonna get, I can answer your question a lot better. But not, not to say that tongue in cheek. If we're, if we're planting warm season annuals, which is what typically you see with your pollinators, they grow pretty good. They grow about anywhere. That's, that's what they're supposed to do. That's why they're calling like native warm seasons.
All right. All right, good. Thank you.
Okay.
That takes care of that. Ms. Kelly? So it's, it's, something's unclear to me here in this project, the way you all have addressed it and talked about it. Are you all intending to do the construction on this project and own this project?
Um, as of now, I would, no. Our business model is to develop the project to the point where it's permitted and then we sell the project.
I see. So, so that's your intention for this, this project?
Yes, sir. Yep.
All right.
Just to be very forthcoming. And
Appreciate that, yes.
That could change, but whatever is required in the CUP is required by whoever we would sell the project to and it would be required to proceed as we would.
All right, good. I'm just looking through. Yeah, I, and this is, I've asked this question from the very beginning, and we can see it on this map, so we'll just leave this map up here. We have an access road proposed from Peach Grove that comes, crosses the, the buffer to the north, comes into the site along the northern side. If you were to want to install and do the construction of the solar panels on the far southwest corner, you would take the construction road around the north side to the west part of the project, down the west side. And then you would come across the, that wetland area to come into the, the southwest corner to put in the solar panels. How are you going to cross that wetland and how are you going to ensure that the wetland is not compromised?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll take that. That area is, the reason we put that small access road over there is because it's really not that deep of a ditch. And it's something that a pickup truck could, could navigate. And that's gonna be pollinators, it's gonna be grass. There will not be, we have no plans, it's not gonna be bare dirt. And so the dip is, it's gonna be grass, drive through the grass, and it's two or three foot depression at that point.
So roughly speaking, how many solar panels are in that lower, that southwest corner? Roughly speaking, I don't need an exact, within, you know.
Yeah, and so, I don't know, let's see, what do we have? We have that 9,000, right? Yes.
Couple hundred.
Yeah, a couple hundred.
Couple hundred. So you're going to bring each one of them in individually on the back of a pickup truck for that area as opposed to bringing a semi across that area to unload them?
Correct.
That's what, yeah, that's what it requires.
And how are you going to install posts in that area to support the solar panels?
It's a, like, the back of a tractor, it's a post driver. It's very similar to my tractor at home. I've got a three-point hitch on it and a post hole auger. And it's very similar. And, but instead of a auger doing this, it rams an I-beam into the ground.
All right. Six, 8,000 pound tractor, something like that, where you're gonna use?
Yeah, in fact, it might be less, but.
Well, I doubt it's less. I doubt it's less.
Yeah. I, I've never weighed once, but I don't know.
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out what the, what, how much will be damaged there in the process of building. Yeah.
My gut right now is I think it's gonna, it would be less than 6,000, but I don't know the weight of it.
All right. So another question, I heard you say that you'd be doing some compacting. And I, I'm not quite sure where the soil compaction would be. Can you comment on where on the project the soil compaction would be?
Yes, as soon as we started, be the access road.
The access road. Anywhere else on the project?
Yes, anything else along the access road, so we'd become an off of Peach Grove Road, anything. So we'd have, and you can correct me, but probably 95% compaction for the road because we have to adhere to, with the fire department, the weight of their trucks. So we may, need to make sure as far as, you know, any emergency vehicle can access that.
So any compaction in the areas where the solar panels are going or in the buffer areas?
Only if we would remove a small crest. If we took a bleed and took off just a crest to be able to put the post in, there would be compaction there.
Yeah, because one of the things I think we've tried to do in the past, I don't see Mr. Eglin now. Oh, there he is, Mr. Eglin. Thank you. One of the things we've tried to do in the past is we tried not to compact the sites any more extensively than necessary. So when the sites are restored, they will grow, they'll grow something. It won't be compacted soil going back into. I know it's a little difficult driving the equipment over to drive the posts and then pull the posts, but compaction has been something we've tried to avoid. Is, is there any discussion, Mr. Eglin, that we've had on that particular issue?
Chairman, not in depth, and I'll go a little bit into that. Regardless of what the applicant decides to do, they're gonna have to receive an erosion, sediment control and stormwater approval through those plans. If they compact the soil, 35 years from now, they will have to bring the property back into agricultural use as required by the conditional use permit. So I would say it would behoove the applicant to develop the project in a way that would not make it more difficult for them 35 years to, later to do that, once they pull all the equipment out.
Can, can you point to the specific condition we put on them to make sure that they comply with that thought 30-some years from now, when some of us are not here or on this earth and some are?
Sure, it's in a couple of different places. So you have your decommissioning section.
Yep.
Sorry, let me unbind or clip my document here. So paid, packet page 43, decommissioning, item number 12, I believe.
Right.
Goes into the removal of pertinences in the facility, filling and compacting of all trenches or borings and other excavations made with associated with the project, removing all debris, performing an environmental phase one, and detailing that report to the zoning administrator for compliance with the conditional use permit. Basically, the applicant 35 years from now is gonna have to provide a report to the county confirming that the project has been removed and the property has been brought back to an agricultural state. We could add in some language that compaction of soil should be mitigated as much as possible or that the project is installed in a way where compaction is not necessary. Now, I don't, I don't wanna speak for the engineer. I don't know if that's a possibility or not.
I, I think item C tends to allude to it there. The completion of decommissioning properties will be made ready for agriculture or forestal use. I just wanna make sure, since it apparently is not the intent of BW Solar to build, operate and decommission this project, that we have sufficient guidance in place, that somebody in the future knows what in the world's gonna happen. Because somebody's buying a project if this goes through, and they need to understand what the requirements are. That's all. That pretty much takes care of my questions. Does anyone else have any questions on this project?
Mr. Chairman, I do.
Mr. Dickerson?
Speaking of decommissioning, it's great. I love looking through here back on page 539 of the packet. There are lots of details on costs for decommissioning, and it totals a whopping $158,125 to do all that. With 9,254 panels, that's $17.09 a panel. Is that realistic?
It, it is, yes. A lot of this, a lot of this is, and the reason that cost seems low is because a lot of this is recyclable. You take the steel from the ground, and steel has scrap value to it. The copper wires, copper has value to it. So when you net out what you're actually going to get back, these are the estimated costs.
So shipping's gonna be $5,500? And where are you gonna ship it to for that? Because it's gotta go out of Louisa County, everything, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So where's it going for $5,500? So, where's it going for five thousand five hundred dollars?
Well, many times. In fact, I even had steel and I've had some sites that people have actually paid me to come in and take the...take it out. And because they saw it was more in scrap value than what their labor. And so, it's gonna be whatever the recycle program is at the time in thirty-five years. So, right now, the recycle program, it designates where these things need to go, who can accept it. It's got aluminum in it, it's got glass, it's got silicon. It's the same...it's a cellphone.
The numbers just seem a little low.
And that's because of the recycle value.
All right. Can you give us calculations including that recycle value? So, we can get a better idea on what that cost would be and make sure these are realistic?
Yes, we can furnish that.
It's a small project. It'd be decommissioned very quickly. Labor's relatively cheap.
Yep, and we put in there, we furnish the backend calculations.
Any other questions from the commission?
I have a comment.
Mr. Weaver?
You know, more and more of these solar farms are coming before us. And you hear the erosion, you hear this. The one that I heard tonight that I appreciate the most is when you destroy these trees, you're not creating a green space, you're destroying the green space. I don't understand how we can continue to do that and say that we're doing our next generation or even farther down the line, but doing them benefits. I have been...I said this in the work session. With all of this information that we got on this one project, there were so many questions in it, I was totally confused. It's just not...it's not there. It's just too much to comprehend and I don't know how these people from the public, how did they comprehend this? It's just...it's way, way out. I...if I was to vote tonight on this project, I would have to vote against it. I'm just...I'm becoming more and more on the point of saying that the county needs to reserve their forestry land and their farming land if we wanna take care of the own keep. But that's just my...
There is a lot of information in there. There's five hundred and something pages in here. And this is, I'd say, the most...the most number of pages of projects I have worked on. It did not start out to that depth. We were asked to provide more information. We've had multiple reviews and said, well, what about this? What about that? So, we have complied and we furnished that and the report keeps going. We're at five hundred and something pages now and...
For example, we did two fiscal economic impact studies for...
Yes, we've done...yeah, we've done two.
We originally did five, then we did a three and a half megawatt, just to give you a costy comparison. That's an additional, you know, thirty, forty pages to review, so...
Right, so every...yeah, every time...
That's why it's growing. It is a lot of information. And that is, I know I was a little...I apologize again, Chairman, for how I suggested maybe we could defer, but I did hear you in our workshop meeting earlier today. If this is so much, how do I kind of condense this and get a really good feel on the project? I will say in terms of the tree removal, Louisa County still has their cap open for projects that are gonna come online here. I mean, you've got Amazon coming here, in Virginia, it's a very good solar market. For this particular project, you're only gonna have about fifteen acres of trees removed and at the end of the project in thirty-five years, that those trees can be replaced. It is small in comparison to some very large projects that, you know, have been presented to the county and will continue to be presented to the county.
On the way here, on Route six twenty-eight, on my left side, I saw acres of clear-cut land and trees are laying there. And, you know, my first thought is, and I was doing forty miles per hour, so I couldn't see, you know, how they dealt with erosion, any of that, but my first thought was, that's a lot of clear-cut land and I really wondered how they're handling that erosion and are they planting new trees back and so forth? Because I start thinking, well, when we decommission the site, it's going back to agricultural. And I know that that may be as a logging operation, but that was certainly a clear-cut and that was two or three miles from the site.
Thank you. So, we're now with no other questions from the commission. We're at the point of taking some...
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Quarles?
I have a question.
Very good, Mr. Quarles, go ahead.
Well, I'll make the floor. To the engineer, he mentioned that he was going to possibly, the voice...he was gonna possibly in the restoration of the site, capture the I-beams, if you will, out of the ground and recycle them and so forth. But in our previous applications, we saw where some of those I-beams would rot in the ground after thirty-five years and that they weren't all retrievable. We have a situation where we have...we know there's water runoff and they're wetlands and they have a plan to go through those. So, how are we gonna recapture and restore those areas? Maybe you can speak to that.
Yes, sir, we'll speak to that. The I-beams that maybe what you have seen maybe not had been galvanized properly and they could be in high water table. And a high water table that's low, that's either at the bottom of a hill, standing water, and it may not be considered a wetland, but it stays moist. And that could be what you're talking about or maybe what you have seen. These, the galvanizing is much better than what it was years ago. And clearly, you know, I don't know what it's gonna look like in thirty-five years when this is pulled out, but I can tell you that this land, the way the slope is, is it is not have standing water in it, so I do not foresee these I-beams being rotted to nothing. The also is it's only a smaller section of the I-beam that gets driven into the ground. So, say for example, if there is a poor galvanizing on something, it when...and that I-beam breaks off because it's rust up under the ground, the rest of the I-beam is saljable.
Mr. Quarles, I will point out that in packet page forty-three, item twelve, decommissioning A1, we have the standard requirement to remove all project facilities and pertinences, including permanent foundations. And the allowance is if they break off more than three feet below the ground, then they can remain. That's what we've had in all of the previous ones. So, that is still in this one, but your point is well taken. Thank you. Did you have?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Comments? You know, we've dealt with these situations before. We'll put a runoff, lack of sediment control. And here, we're guesstimating where this water's gonna travel. We know it's going downhill. We know the area and we know the previous runoff from other projects that have been in the area. I just feel like this area is wrong for this project. And if I had to vote tonight, I would have to say no. I mean, it's just, you know, there's a bunch of guessing about sediment control and so forth and so on and based on our history of the projects, larger or smaller, I don't think we can afford to vote positively on this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quarles. So, as I was saying, with no further commentary from...
Mr. Chairman.
Well, Mr. Kersey, there is further commentary.
Yeah, unfortunately.
We don't have any Virginia fans in here tonight.
We don't have any NC State fans, that's for doggone sure. Except for one.
We've discussed a number of the issues already, but when I was interested in staff has recommended using Gold Mine as the entrance and Ms. Kelly in her opening remarks, it seemed like that really has not been a consideration, so I think we have to have that as part of the application or it's not gonna go with my vote either.
Would you like me to?
Sure, yeah, it has been considered. I mean, we had huge pushback on during our first meeting with the public and understandably we sat with the conditions of Peach Grove Road. I mean, everything is...has been considered. We went back, we really studied it hard with our environmental consultants and engineering and it's really not our recommendation to do that. I mean, it's not favorable for Leggano.
I'll give...in fact, I stole this from Josh. I had said it for years, but he...I think he said it better. Avoid, minimize, mitigate. That's our process. And if we can avoid going over waterway, we want to do that.
Yeah, I can certainly understand that, but Peach Grove is a non-starter for an entrance. You can ask any of the public, I managed mail delivery out in that area for years. It's a dangerous road and we don't need to put this kind of traffic on it, I can tell you that.
We did move the entrance. We had it on the upper east side and that complied with the V-dot, with the five hundred foot, and then we took the feedback that...about moving it. And so, we moved it to where it's currently shown and so we have seven hundred foot looking east and looking west. And as far as the width of the road, sure, it's a narrow road. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I've driven tractor-trailers and when somebody had said about how if a tractor-trailer and somebody is on, you know, who's gonna go into grass, I know that, you know? You drive a tractor-trailer, you know that. And so, it is a narrow road, yes. But our option is what, you know, we've been discussing for two hours about this creek and sediment and so forth. We don't wanna...we don't wanna put any more sediment. We don't want it...we want it better than it is now. If we go in and we...and we, you know, go and put culverts in and a bridge and all this, I mean, you know, that's gonna tear up it a lot more than anything what we've been talking about.
Yeah. So, the final analysis, there may be some sites that are just not suitable.
Well, that...
No, go ahead.
To address your point. So, I counted the other day, there's about sixty lots on Peach Grove or off of Peach Grove that are undeveloped. And I drove around them and for the last three years, there's always two houses being built somewhere. Every one of those is gonna bring at least two cars and when their kids get a little bit older, it's gonna bring a couple more cars. We all know that Peach Grove is on a list somewhere to be improved, but to say that we're gonna put a few tractor-trailers on this road for a couple months and then it's gonna be a pickup truck every...
Twice a year for thirty-five years.
Couple months. That's a net improvement over what we would have on the other end. There's concrete trucks, there's truckloads of trusses that come up and down this road every day and they're building those houses and they're putting more cars on that road. This is the best way that we can say there won't be any traffic on that sixty acres in whenever this project's complete, a year and a half, whatever. I mean, that has to make a difference when we look at it and say, all those people up there are just continuously building up that road. This is not gonna be part of that. We're gonna blend right in with those concrete trucks and then in two months, we're gonna be gone, but there's gonna be more concrete trucks and more truss loads coming in and more roofing trucks. That's just...that's gonna be the nature of developing out sixty more lots. But just wanted to kinda give you some perspective.
Appreciate that.
Yes.
And I'm gonna ask this time. Do any commissioners have any more commentary?
Mr. Chairman?
No.
Mr. Brooks, thank you for that. Do you speak for everyone else?
Yes.
Thank you. So, I'm left with two thoughts. The first thought is, does the applicant still wish to defer for a month?
Yes.
The applicant does. I'm also left with a question. Do any of the planning commissioners believe that the information gathered between now and next month's meeting would materially change their vote?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Goodwin?
I don't know that it would materially change, but I don't want to set the precedent that we accept applications with this many major questions left unanswered. And if we do this, the next person says, well, I don't need to answer all these questions either. I don't think it's a great idea. We ought to have all this information in front of us.
Fair point. Very good. Thank you. In that case, then...
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Quarles? I'm sorry, Mr. Quarles, I keep forgetting you're there in the ethernet. My apologies. Yes, sir.
Well, it's not...it's because I'm not in front of you, sir. But that's okay. My voice will take care of that. But anyway, you know, I look at this and I say, okay, well, they want...they're asking for a deferment. But I think, and you asked the question, whether or not any information that could be conveyed between this time and that time would make us change our vote. I think the project, dealing with all the...well, look at the opposition. I didn't hear anybody saying that they were in favor of it other than the applicant. And I think that after a month's time, I think we're gonna go to...come to the same thing. I think we're just gonna put staff through some other stuff. I think we vote on it tonight. My comment. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Quarles, and I do appreciate that sentiment. That is one of the reasons I asked the question to get a sense of the commission, but I am going to agree with Mr. Goodwin that it is proper to have a complete application. I think we've hammered a lot of things out tonight. We've certainly heard from the public on this and gotten a lot of good information, but as this is in my district, I am going to turn the gavel over to the vice chairman properly so that I can make a recommendation to table this until the April meeting and we will decide then.
I second.
And that will give a chance for the final questions to be resolved.
Any discussion? Ready for roll call vote?
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Disasway?
Yes.
Mr. Kersey?
Yes.
Mr. Quarles?
No.
Mr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Dickerson?
Yes. Carry till next month?
Very good.
I'll turn the gavel back over to you quickly.
Thank you. All right. Thank you all and we'll look forward to having those questions answered for next month.
All right, thank you.
All right, next up, under new business is review and renewal of the Beaver Dam Creek Ag and Forestry District, Mr. Eglin.
Good evening, Chairman. Before you tonight, as a...sorry about that. Before you tonight is the renewal of the Beaver Dam Creek Agricultural and Forestry District. The district was originally established in nineteen ninety-four, the ten-year review period. The district was reviewed in two thousand and four and in two thousand and fourteen and is scheduled to expire on April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Approximately four hundred and forty-two point seven eight seven acres of either A1 or A2 agriculturally zoned properties currently make up the Beaver Dam Creek District as depicted in the current slide. The twenty forty Louisa County Comprehensive Plan designates this area of Louisa County as rural. The planning commission has asked staff to clearly show the core of the district, which via Virginia State Code fifteen point two dash four three oh five defines as no less than two hundred acres in one parcel or in contiguous parcels. The contiguous parcels in orange on the current slide make up the core of two hundred acres of contiguous parcels within the district, while the yellow-colored parcels will make up the remainder of the Beaver Dam Creek District on the image to your right. The purple-colored parcels to the north are part of the nearby Green Springs Agricultural Forestry District. Louisa County Community Development Department contacted the current property owners of the Beaver Dam Creek District to inform the owners of the renewal period. No responses have been received by community development department staff from property owners. An example of the letter sent out by staff can be found on page five hundred and sixty-seven of the staff packet. An example of the letter sent out by staff can be found on page 567 of the staff packet. The Agricultural and Forestal and Rural Preservation Committee met on January, I'm sorry, February 28th, 2024, and voted to forward a recommendation of renewal of the Beaver Dam Creek Agricultural and Forestal District to the Planning Commission. Community Development Department staff also recommends renewal of the Beaver Creek Agricultural and Forestal District, and this concludes staff's report.
Very good. Does anyone have any questions for the staff?
Just to clarify, reading in the letter, it says, no response means you want to stay.
That is correct.
Sorry, I didn't get the question.
That's, that's quite all right. It's quite all right.
I have a, I have a question.
Mr. Weaver?
When they put this land in this forestal district, what, what can they do to get it out?
So there's two ways to remove yourself from an agricultural forestal district. One is you wait for the 10-year renewal. At that time, you just send in a letter, like, they would, someone would send a letter and said, I'd like to be removed from the district, and then they would be, they would go through the Planning Commission, Board of Supervisors, and be removed of the district, and the ordinance will be updated to remove that parcel from the zoning ordinance. The other way is if you are in the middle or the beginning of a 10-year renewal, you could request a removal from the district through the Planning Commission, Board of Supervisors process as well. You would go to the Ag Forestal District, ask for recommendation from them. Remember, the goal of the Agricultural Forestal Preservation Committee is to increase the number of parcels, so they may not give you a favorable recommendation if you ask to be removed prior to the 10-year renewal. And then you would go from that meeting to the Planning Commission, followed by the Board of Supervisors, and the board would make the final decision on whether or not to remove you from the district prior to the 10-year renewal.
And, and one more thing. So with the death of a property owner, the heir has the right to request removal from the district.
So when, when it, when it reverses back, it goes back like if it was A2?
The zoning does not change. It, it would just, it's, imagine it as like an overlay district essentially, is that it provides additional protections from development. So if you are in the Ag Forestal District, for example, you cannot apply for a conditional use permit for a special occasion facility for your farm. You would have to, because that would be a use higher than what you currently have, which is agricultural. So you would have to request removal from the Ag Forestal District prior to applying for a conditional use permit for a special occasion facility.
Thank you.
This is not something we take up regularly, but it is something that we do, that we will take up regularly as these come for renewal. My understanding is, since this is not listed on the public hearings, that we do not have a public hearing associated with this.
That is correct.
This is simply a vote for approval. So again, any further questions from commission members? Very good.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Goodwin.
I move to, what's the word I want to do? Continue.
Right here, George.
Oh, it's there?
Right, right here, yes.
Yeah, well, see, I got to find that in this.
Packet page 562. Here. Read mine. There you go. Just hand it to him. There you go. George.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, there's not a public hearing. However, Mr. Madison, who is on the Agricultural and Forestal District, has indicated to me that he'd like to address you on this.
Oh, very well, yes.
Yeah, as, as he said, I'm on the committee. I actually missed this meeting, we were out of town, but I would just kind of let you all know, since this is kind of a, you know, this is more of a procedural thing up there than it is really anything else, I think. The people who are in these districts find a lot of value in it, and we hear that from them. We hear it when we host the meetings to talk about it. So, you know, you feel like you're checking the box up there. Tom gave a report, okay, sounds great, check. But it really does mean something to people who are in them. So I know it's kind of boring, but you're doing something that people really do find, find a lot of value in. So that's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Gillespie and I were able to attend the meeting last night that was held about Ag Forestal Districts through the Extension Department and the committee. Jim Riddell led that meeting. We got a ton of information in about a two-hour presentation, so if any of you all want to learn more, they're going to be having more of those meetings, and I'd really encourage you to go to them, because it is a great program for the landowner. So being that this is in the Green Springs District, I recommend we, I move we approve renewal of the Beaver Dam Creek Ag Forestal District to our Board of Supervisors.
Second.
Motion and second. Do we have any further discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Disasway?
Yes.
Mr. Kersey?
Yes.
Mr. Quarles?
Yes.
Mr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Dickerson?
Yes.
Very good. Motion passes. One further thing that I'll ask, there are two prop, well, there's one property that was approved probably four, five years ago in the Annseville District that still doesn't show up on any maps as being a part of the Annseville District, and it'd be really nice to get that to show up. So anyhow, I just mentioned that. Interesting how I would know. Next up is reports. Mr. Gillespie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm in the habit of talking about the five Ps, as you all know, so I'll start off with Ps. I'm thrilled to announce that we have a new member on our planning and zoning team, Renee Maier. You all have had a chance to speak with her before today's meeting, but she's a familiar face. So many of you have known her before. Renee was working in Deborah Johnson's position, doing a lot of the administrative assistant work to support the planning and zoning, what is now Division, and has come back to us after some time in Spotsylvania County. Sorry for them, good for us, as an associate planner. So we're thrilled to have her here. She's doing some yeoman's work. We're still 25% of that four-person division down, as we're looking to replace a community development technician, and we have interviews for our permit technician. As you know, we had a part-time person who was working four days a week, which caused a little bit of cover, coverage issue on a counter that's open five days a week. So we're thrilled to be able to replace that with a full-time position. It's funded for that, and so we have a couple candidates who are going in for final interviews, and that'll put us back to full strength in the, in the department again. Places, as you spoke earlier about our growth areas and our focus areas, it's certainly apt that Zion Crossroads and Lake Anna are the two of the main focus areas. We continue to see some new product types, both coming out of the ground and being finished in hospitality lodgings in both areas. Obviously, quite different markets at the lake and Zion Crossroads towards Charlottesville, but that is something that we have very little of in this county, is kind of a commercial hospitality provider. There had been some policies in process at the beginning of the year with new members on the board and the commission, but some of those are still in the works. I'll just say, the chair has led that by creating some small working groups to examine some of the policies that were recently adopted in the past couple of years, including the solar policy for the county, technology overlay district, and some of the other recent policy changes. And then lastly, in projects, we have some new projects to take on in the planning and zoning division. That includes our focus areas and our gateways, and so we'll be bringing back a report to you on that next month. I don't have anything further for you this evening, but happy to answer any questions about activities in the department.
Any questions from the commissioners I've learned to ask tonight?
Get that guy in.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Gillespie. Appreciate that. Which brings us to the last item on the agenda.
I have one, one question.
Mr. Barlow?
I think...
You're not a planning commissioner. I didn't ask you. I apologize.
This is very important.
Mr. Barlow, please.
With the, with the pool that the PCs got, would y'all request that staff fix that dog on air conditioning so we don't burn up in here on the 18th?
Well, y'all folk took care of it. Yeah, I think...
Yeah, but might need some...
The last time y'all fixed it, it got so cold, and your holly wanted to walk out.
I, I think you overestimated our capabilities, but, yeah. Very well, then, the chair would entertain that motion. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Oh, my goodness, Tommy.
Well, if I'd known, I, I wouldn't have wore half what I... If I'd known, I wouldn't have wore half what I...